I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor, Ms. Melissa?
Here.
Vice Mayor Javelin?
Here.
Councilmember Russo?
Here.
Councilmember Tinsley?
Here.
Councilmember Leedy?
Here. I see no additions, deletions, or modifications. Before we get to announcements and presentations, I'd just recognize a couple people in the audience with us tonight. We have former Mayor Mike Martino. Somewhere, Mike. And Councilwoman Annie Delgado. Thank you for coming. Let's start with announcements and presentations. We have the 2014 Police Department Summary Report. Chief Stepp.
For the record, Stephen Stepp, your Chief of Police. I'd like to give you a brief overview of our crime report for 2014. Start out with our Part 1 crime comparison, looking at 2013 and 2014. In overall, crime is down. When we go to -- it's kind of small, so I'll go to the highlights of it. Our Part 1 crime is down almost 4 percent. It equates to 63 fewer crimes than last year. This decrease is the third year in a row and the lowest rate since 1987, or 27-year-low. We had 33,695 citizen calls for service that we responded to, to assist them, and 137,000 combined incidents involving police action. Just as a side note, going back 2007, 2008, we had 10 more officers budgeted than we do today. So we're a leaner workforce, leveraging our training, our technology, our programs, and of course, the partnerships that we share with our coworkers and within the community to more efficiently serve our community. When we look at the arrest totals for 2014, again, a small chart on the screen here. It's available online. We see that the department made 1,266 arrests in 2014. Eighty-four of those were juveniles. The top four arrest categories in order were criminal traffic, theft, which is mostly comprised of shoplifting, drugs, and driving under the influence. I also wanted to note our Juvenile First Offender Program that we run in conjunction with the school district police countywide. It's an alternative program for kids to avoid having an arrest record for the less serious crimes first time around, so we can keep them out of the system. It's better for them because they tend to be repeat offenders once they go into incarceration. So we try different techniques, working with other members of the county to make it all When we look at traffic safety, there's a few highlights there from last year that I wanted to bring to your attention. One, you may have heard of before, our Forget Me Not Car Seat Safety Program, which helps protect children from being left in hot cars. It works in conjunction with the typical 200 or so car seats that we install for the public free of charge each year. The highlight this year with that program is we were nominated through the Florida Chiefs Association to receive -- came in first place for the Rocky Pomerance Award. In turn, we were nominated to the International Association of Chiefs of Police Weber-Sevee Competition for Innovative Community Outreach, and we're a top-10 finalist internationally. So we're real proud of that program and hope that it ultimately will save young children's lives. When we look at DUI Education Enforcement Awards that we received, we got an award from the Palm Beach County Traffic Safety Council for our efforts, and through the Florida Department of Transportation, their State Challenge, we received a grant for our efforts for $15,000. And in the Motor Challenge Award through the state, we were able to receive $5,000 for traffic equipment. Allows us to do our job better. We also really pushed forward with our Aggressive Driving Prevention Program. We began using an unmarked vehicle to combat aggressive drivers who tend to cause the most serious injury accidents. When we talk about aggressive drivers, we're talking about those drivers that commit multiple violations in a very short period of timeframe. So they may be speeding, they may be zipping in and out of traffic, cutting people off, not using their lane change signals, running stop signs, red lights, all within a short period of time that tend to cause real serious accidents. Also, in our Click It or Ticket Seatbelt Safety Award that we won, we were able to win an award for, we pushed that real hard because we know that most of the injury accidents that we have to deal with involve people not wearing their seatbelt. In fact, one important aspect is when you see traffic homicides where someone dies in a car accident, pretty much anywhere around the country, it seems like there's always at least two of three factors that always come into play in a fatality. And that's someone's not wearing a seatbelt, there's speed involved, and someone's under the influence. Two of those three factors always come into play. So trying to encourage people to wear their seatbelt, we think, is a really, really good thing. We also started a new program, and it's up there -- the acronym is D-DAX. It's not spelled wrong. It stands for Data-Driven Approaches to Crime and Traffic Safety. It basically integrates location-based crime and crash information to determine the most effective method for deploying our law enforcement resources in order to reduce crime and crashes. What that basically means is, we used to look at where our traffic incidents were, our crashes, and we'd deal with that separate. We'd look at where crime was occurring and deal with that separate. There's a new theory that perhaps if you overlay the two, they tend to be in the same area. So if we concentrate on those areas and put our resources there, we hope to find that not only will we reduce crashes, but be more visible and thwart some of the criminal activity that's occurring. So that's a program that started last year. We're continuing with it into 2015, and we hope that it'll make a difference and knock down the number of crashes and crime, hopefully, for the future. Some other notable highlights that I wanted to bring up from 2014 is for the 12th consecutive year in a row, in conjunction with our Recreation Department or Fire Rescue People, we won the award for National Night Out Against Crime. It was a great program that we had right here on-site, and we had several thousand people attend, and I think everyone had a good time with that. We've also begun a new program funded through our Police Foundation for Crime Mapping and Analysis. It's a move towards predictive policing, and that's the future of where we're headed with technology. And we introduced a public version, which is called RaidsOnline.com. So if anyone from the public wants to see a lesser version to indicate what crime or activity is occurring in their neighborhood or around their business, they can do so at RaidsOnline.com. Also, hometown security efforts were reinforced. We like to have a combination of our community partners and put that together with Homeland Security. Most agencies seem to separate the two. Community-oriented policing seems to go against Homeland Security efforts. We believe differently. We believe we can maintain those partnerships, stay active with the community, and yet, with their help, provide a safer community, God forbid some really catastrophic event were to occur. In the meantime, we continue to increase our training and equipment available to us, and we believe that we are much better prepared now than we were a number of years ago. Our Citizens Mobile Patrol Program, known as the CMPEERS, continue to be a force multiplier, assisting our officers and freeing up their time. And our Explorers place first in regional competition. It's a four-county region, and as you know, they serve as our farm team for the Police Department. These youngsters are in the age of 14 to 21, and it's not that unusual for them to become police officers for us. And in fact, our Officer of the Year this year was one of our previous police explorers. So we're very proud of that program. And also, national reaccreditation. For the seventh time, we've been nationally reaccredited. We're in compliance with 380 applicable standards for our agency, indicating that we follow the highest-recognized national standards. There were no issues found with our compliance. The next chart I usually bring up each year, and to me, it's the most impressive. It shows our population going back to 1990. And while our population has probably gone up two times plus, our crime rate has actually gone down. So, again, 27-year-low, this chart goes back to 1990, but I assure you, it goes back even further than that. So, third year in a row, we had a reduction in crime. Again, very proud of that. When we look at it from a per capita, it's even more impressive. And you'll see that it shows at the bottom there, per thousand population, there's 30 crimes. But when you consider that almost 2/3 of our crime are related to shoplifting, the chance of being a victim of crime as an individual in the city is extremely low, and of being a victim of violent crime is much lower still. So overall, we have a pretty safe city, and I think we continue to head in the right direction with all the partnerships that we form. And I wish the Police Department could take credit for the continuing drop, but it's really the whole community that allows it to happen. It's a lot of factors in play. So that's basically a synopsis of our annual report. Again, the full 14-page report's available online, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions to the chief?
Chief, on the reaccreditation, how unusual is it to have no issues? That's unusual.
I believe pretty unusual. One of our assessors, I think he said he's done about 35 of these, and he said it was the best ever, and he travels around the country. The other assessor said that he's the hatchet man, that usually is the bad guy bringing up all the problems, and he just couldn't find anything. So again, I have to give credit to all the partners and the employees that we have. Every officer participates one way or another. Every civilian employee participates one way or another. We've got one of the top accreditation managers watching our back every day, making sure we do things right. It doesn't guarantee, and we're certainly not perfect, doesn't guarantee success all the way around, but by and large, we're heading in the right direction. We continue that way, and hopefully, we just keep getting better and better. But between the employees, again, and the partnerships, can't say it enough, it makes a difference in this city. There's something special that goes on in the gardens that we enjoy doing our job. We just love serving the public.
Well, another quick comment, too, is the agencies that are getting credit are the best agencies in the country. So that makes our agency the best of the best, that we would have no issues.
Don't put all that pressure on them.
I'm going to actually, you know, he asked the question, though, why is it, you know, a good, you know, city here? And I'm going to tell you, one of the things was, we had groundbreaking, which we'll talk about under Items of Resident Interest, for our fire station, too, and the chief and his command staff were out there, supporting our firemen. And I know that our firemen support our police, and then all of our employees support each other, and that teamwork is part of the reason why we are able to get this accreditation and get it with no issues.
Anybody else?
No, I just want to say, congratulations. You continue to make us proud, and you're very humble in saying that it's not just you, but you and your department is a big reason why these stats are so low, and we appreciate all of your hard work and effort going into it and with the accreditation, everything else that you do, and all these award-winning things that you mentioned. You really make us proud. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, also.
All right. Next up, we have Items of Resident Interest and Board Committee Reports, and we'll start with David.
Well, we all attended the groundbreaking of Fire Station Number Two, which is being rebuilt. It is the busiest fire station in the city, and it's been desperately in need of being rebuilt for a couple of years now. The mayor gave a wonderful speech, saying that we've got an incredibly low interest rate to get the money to rebuild this station. Hopefully, very shortly, I think eight months, and of course, the project will be done on time and under budget. We will have a new fire station for the service of our citizens and also, you know, to protect our firefighters and make sure that they have a good station and resources to make sure that they protect us. Also, the mayor and I went up to Palm Beach County Day, up in Tallahassee, to meet with our local legislatures, and we were pushing some issues that were very important to the city. One is a water issue for the rebuilding of the C-17 and C-18 structures. We're asking the state to provide a matching grant of $1.25 million, and of course, we were able to garner support for that, amongst several other things, which, at the last council meeting, I went ahead and read off the legislative priorities for the League of Cities, which may are important to the city, and we did discuss a lot of those issues with our legislatures. And we also met with the Chief Financial Officer of the state of Florida, who is our own Jeff Atwater from North Palm Beach. So I thought it was a very successful trip, and I think we're going to be able to get a little bit of funding coming back to the city. Going back to the League of Cities, I did attend their meeting, which was held at Palm Beach Shores. We made some discussions about the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, and we also discussed, and I guess many of you saw in the paper, that Bill Manuel, a town council member of the village of North Palm Beach, passed away. Bill was a strong member of the League of Cities, and we discussed replacing Bill on that. Of course, he had his memorial service, which unfortunately, I was out of town, so I couldn't attend, but we do want to send our condolences to the village. Bill will be sorely missed. He was a good man. And we also appointed to the Advisory Boundary Committee, Ally Biggs of Pahokee and Steve Waldman. And we got a little bit of a legal report, which I'll go over, if I find it, very briefly. Okay, one case is the Coons versus St. John's Water Management District, which was a taking case, and we need to be, of course, very careful that we don't do any property takings. And then one that I thought was very interesting is this one where a gentleman named Jeffrey Marcus Gray has gone around and sued a lot of people, making ridiculous public records requests and, you know, impossible demands, and actually, he has been rebuked by the judicial system. So that's good news also. In addition, I attended the C-51 Governance and Finance Work Group. Okay, everybody's eyes glaze over yet? Okay. Where we were discussing a resolution supporting the development of the C-51 as a water supply, and a motion was made and passed to transmit a draft resolution to the various towns in Palm Beach County and other entities in Palm Beach and Broward County that would be interested in the C-51. From the viewpoint of Palm Beach Gardens, there's only one benefit that the city would get, and that's an environmental benefit to the Lake Worth Lagoon. So I would suggest that when we get that, and of course, I guess our attorney will get that draft resolution, that anything dealing with water supply be stricken, and that we only concentrate on the environmental benefits that would be, you know, conferred upon the entire county, and therefore, a benefit to the city. So with that, I think I'm done.
Marcy?
First, I also want to publicly give my condolences to the family and friends of Bill Manuel of North Palm Beach, as David mentioned. He was a true public servant. Eric and I did attend his memorial service, which was a very beautiful service at Veterans Park in North Palm. And as I said, he is a true public servant leader. He had such a positive and welcoming attitude, a very friendly demeanor, and he will definitely truly be missed. On a much happier note, the mayor and I attended the historical -- yeah, I was -- yes, we did. I was trying to figure out who was there. The mayor and I attended the Historical Society's meeting, where Mike Lyons, longtime resident, gave a very interesting history of weather events, including a lot of hurricane stats. Very interesting. Went back into time, which was a great event there. I chaperoned 10 of our Palm Beach Gardens High School students to a solo competition, where each Coral student, they were judged on their two solos each. It was very nerve-wracking for them, not me. But they did such a fabulous job, and I'm just so proud of all of them. All of them got superior ratings. It was wonderful. We all, of course, attended the Honda Classic, the kickoff, and also the Honda Classic event, although it was a gully washer on Saturday. I have to definitely commend the entire team of the Honda who worked so hard, especially on Saturday. I know it was tough. You guys handled the situation extremely well. It could have been a lot worse. And on Sunday, thank goodness, it was a beautiful day, and ended very well on Monday. Last week, Bert, Eric, and I attended the Brookdale Senior Living Facility on Prosperity, although it's been in our city for 20 years or so. The facility was recently purchased by Brookdale and also very nicely renovated. They must have spent a fortune on that renovation. It was absolutely beautiful, and the residents seemed extremely happy there. That was a wonderful event. As a lot of you know, we had our All-Aboard Florida Workshop, and for those of you that didn't have an opportunity to listen or to attend, it was extremely informative. We had a lot of our questions answered, some not, but we did have a lot of our questions answered. I also have done a little additional research on the topic of the horns, because a lot of people were concerned about the fact that they thought the horns were louder than they had been in the past. And since then, after doing some research, according to the FRA, there is, and they kind of alluded to this fact, but there is a decibel range, 90 to 116, that is permissible for the horns, for the train horns, I should say. The older engines operated under the lower range of the decibel, and many of these engines have been replaced with newer engines, and the new engines, all of which are operating on the higher end of the decibel range. And that's the reason people are suggesting that they think it's louder, and in my opinion, it is as well. So we are understandably frustrated because of it. Hopefully, we'll resolve some of the issues that we were talking about with quiet zones and the other things. But the only good thing that was pointed out at the All-Aboard Florida Workshop, which I think, Eric, you mentioned it as well, that effort will help our North County stop for tri-rail. And on that note, I want to point out that the city, our city, is the third-highest in providing jobs for Palm Beach County. Boca is the first, West Palm Beach the second, and we are in a range of approximately, what, 27,000? West Palm Beach is 35, and Boca is above that. Boca has the highest tri-rail station, the busiest, I should say, tri-rail station, and they're about to get a second one. And hopefully, we can look forward to our first in the near future because of those stats. So anyway, we also had our Rec Advisory Board meeting. I have to say, it was a record number of people in attendance at that meeting. The reasoning behind that record attendance at our meeting was, we had Martha Owen Gilbert and Bob Friedman, who is a rep of the USA Pickleball Association. And they came before us, and they were great people, great speakers, and they, very informative, gave us a little bit of information about pickleball and how popular the sport has grown. They came to us to request four dedicated courts somewhere in our city, and they are currently using our parks and very happy to do so, but it is very, very popular. And they're currently playing in our community center. And it's a sport that all age groups participate in, and again, it's very popular, so they were requesting some fields. I know staff was very interested in their comments, and we'll look into that, I'm sure.
Do they need cloths?
I'm sorry?
Do they need cloths?
No. But good point. Where's that gavel? And last, we attended the fire station with groundbreaking, which was a wonderful event, and we got a little momentum with us, and I can use this if you and you get out of line. I have my hat now, so, thank you.
Thanks, that's mine.
I know, mine's right here.
So you already stole his hat, then you wanted to worry about him getting out of line?
Right.
Go ahead, Joe. Great thing going after Marcy, if there's one or two things she missed, at least I could say something. By the time we get down to you guys. I attended the girls' softball opening night, which was great. I think Marcy was busy with work, but I think the rest of us were there. So, thank you for being busy, Marcy, because this way I could comment on something, so thank you. I also attended the Honda Media Day. You know, both the mayor and vice mayor were tied up, so I attended. It was the first time that we were able to speak at the Honda Media Day before all the press and so forth, which is kind of good to, you know, talk about the city of Palm Beach Gardens and how much the event means to us. So that worked out really well. Yesterday, I attended the opening of Skybridge Capital. They're a financial firm that have just relocated part of their offices on PGA Boulevard. They have many offices throughout the country and the world, I believe. They have over $73 billion under management. They're a fund of funds. I met with and spoke with Mr. Scaramucci, who is one of the principals, and it was just exciting to hear that he was so happy to be here, and I told him we got a lot more room. And I'm sure that you might get tired of paying those taxes up in New York City, so you might want to bring a few more people down here. So it was, he told me he wants to sit down and talk, and as we all know, the more jobs we have, the better the economy is, the better it is for the city and the less we all pay in real estate taxes. We all know how well the Honda tournament was. I mean, if you watched it, unfortunately, Saturday wasn't good. Marcy commented on it. I attended a number of events related to the Honda. I will tell you that the sponsor is very happy with the event. We have one more year to go on our contract, and I believe that we'll be having an extension to it. Again, the coverage that we get, both internationally and nationally, the homes that we were in, our television, you know, the television is in, it's just amazing, actually, all that happens. I see Jack Schnorr sitting in the back. Jack, I want to thank you and your crew and all the fire and their crew for all they've done out there. This is a great event, and it just doesn't happen. A lot of people work very hard. I was interviewed for a newspaper article a few weeks ago, and they wanted me to talk about why the event is what it is. And I said, "Well, it basically starts with the Nicholas family, and we've got great staff, we've got great workers to work it, and the best of the volunteers." So many people volunteer. We're able to give $2.5 million to charity, and if we had to pay all the volunteers for what they do, we wouldn't be able to give $0.10 to charity. So it's a great event. It gives us great national exposure, brings significant economic impact into the city. And when the event is over, a lot of money goes to charity. So I want to thank everybody that helped make that happen. It was a great event, even though the weather was. If you watched the last day on television, you know how great it was, and it's great to have it back again next year. I also went and filmed a short. Again, I was available. Many of you were tied up. Of course, they gave us so much notice. I think it was less than 24 hours. Downtown in the gardens is celebrating their 10th anniversary, so I went by and filmed a congratulations and a happy birthday and all different things. I don't know which one they used, because I didn't see the commercial yet, but they're having their 10th anniversary this month, many different events. Tomorrow night is a kickoff event, which is downtown, has talent. They did it back, I guess, I don't know, seven, eight years ago, Eric? They used to have this town similar to American Idol. It's very entertaining. They've got great acts, and I know one of the judges is really good, happens to be me. So anyway, I'll be out there tomorrow night judging. They asked me to judge. I judged in the past. It's very entertaining. It doesn't have a cost, and, you know, downtown gardens is a great asset for us, so if you're not doing anything, you may want to go by and see some great talent. That's about all I have.
Thank you. Eric?
Okay, well, everybody covered up so much. First, I know the mayor's going to talk about boys' baseball. We all, the mayor and I, attended that last week, and my hand is sore because all those Little Leaguers come by and give you a high five. Man, I'll tell you, there must have been a couple hundred of them. Man, I'll tell you, there must have been a couple hundred of them. But it was a great event, and I know the mayor's going to talk about it, because he did all the talking, actually. And I just want to say one more thing about Bill Manuel. Bill was a good friend, a wonderful councilman. He was a great asset to the community, and he was a Navy veteran. And he was singularly involved in the creation of the Veterans Park for North Palm Beach, and it was fitting that they had his memorial service there. And he's a good guy, and I'd like to say goodbye to him publicly, because I knew him, and he was a wonderful man. And that's it, thanks.
Bert, if I may, I also want to send my condolences to the family. We all know Bill. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go on Tuesday morning. Great man, lived for public service, and like we all do here, and it's just a shame to see him leave us so early.
So early.
He's a young man, 68, I believe, and it's just a shame that the Lord wanted him. There's so much more I think he could have done here, but we'll all miss him, and again, to his family, we're all sorry.
Before we move on, we'll just have a moment of silence.
Thank you very much. February was a very busy month. I know you guys have talked a lot about a lot of stuff, but let me kind of go over a couple of things. Eric and I went to the Winn-Dixie ribbon cutting on Northlake Boulevard. They put about $2 to $3 million renovations, mostly to the inside of the store, and brought it up to par with probably the standards that a Winn-Dixie should be at going forward with the competition, the levels they have to deal with. So it's really beautiful inside, it's got a whole deli, hot food section, maybe that's the start of the kind of revitalization of that whole plaza. So I was impressed by it, it was a great event, and I got to stop by and see the progress they're making and meet some of their management team out of Jacksonville, so that was nice that they were down here. Baseball, Eric and I went to the baseball opening. I think they actually have 520 kids in their baseball program this spring. And the nice thing is, is there's so many wonderful people who volunteer on that board. I used to do it years ago, and there's so many athletes and people in this area, and we are fortunate enough to have Dennis Eckersley come out. He was a pitcher for the Red Sox and the Oakland A's 20 or so years ago, but he's a first-time ballot Hall of Famer who lives in the area. So he came out and threw the first pitch to one of the little kids, so really a nice time, and I'm glad people like that come out and support our programs and do things here in our community. I want to thank ESPN Radio for coming out to the Green Market a couple weeks ago. They interviewed me for the Honda Classic tournament. They're very active in our community, and especially on the sports side, obviously, but for them to spend the time and come to our Green Market every year and talk about the Honda and promote it, I just want to give them a little kudos. The Brookdale facility was a wonderful event. The lady who cut the ribbon with me, I believe her name was Judy, she's 104 years old, and she's been there 17 years at Prosperity Oaks, which is now Brookdale. And I think it was a $2 to $3 million renovation as well to the inside, and it looks spectacular. And I think they have plans to expand in the back of a memory care unit as well, and more renovations possibly to the surrounding landscaping and stuff. So just a great event. We're glad Brookdale is here in our community. They're in 20 states, I believe, around the country, so it's great to have them here and putting the capital, the equity into that place, because I think it has over 300 residents now, and I think it's pretty full, so it's a great facility hidden back there. The Honda Classic, I didn't make it on Saturday. I would usually the day I don't go with all the rain, I guess I planned it well. But if you showed up Sunday and you walked around out there, you couldn't believe what you saw on TV Saturday night compared how it looked on Sunday. It's just amazing. Not only what our teams did, the Honda guys, the workers, to get that course ready to go for Sunday for all-day play, and then Monday to finish up. So again, tremendous effort by all and a good representation of our city on TV. David, I just want to publicly thank you for taking me around yesterday. I had not been up to legislative session before. We met with a lot of good representatives yesterday. CFO Hatwater is just a tremendous person and a great asset, because he's from North Palm Beach, he knows our area, and he's very committed to helping out things that we need to get done. So he spent a good half hour with about 60 or 70 people in a conference room yesterday, and then go out to see other representatives and David taking me around. So I appreciate you spending the day and showing me the ropes. It was interesting, to say the least, how things work up there. And then also, I'd like to thank Chief Suther for the groundbreaking today of the fire station. We've been talking about the station, which is on Campus Drive over by Palm Beach State College. For the last couple of years, it's finally come into fruition. It's going to be a great fire station, state-of-the-art, category-five hurricane-proof. So God forbid if we have some nasty storms come through here ever again, we're going to have a lot of facilities now in this city that are category-strong that will get through those events and be able to help the citizens and the residents in times of need, which there will be, obviously, if storms like that come through here again, that we've seen in the last decade or so. So thanks to Chief Suther for putting that together, and for all your guys being out there. It was a nice event, and in nine months, we look forward to the ribbon cutting and seeing that thing in action, so thank you. And there will be no downtime in the existing station converting to the new station, so that being the busiest station in the city, a lot of calls on the eastern end of our city, so that will be maintained and fully serviced while the new one is being built, and then torn down when the new one's operational and ready to go. So don't fear, there'll be plenty of guys out there to help if needed, so thank you again for doing that. And then, piggybacking on companies coming to our city, I want to recognize Olympus Insurance Company, who will be relocating from Orlando. They've leased about 19,000 square feet in the North Corp Parkway Center, and they're bringing 50 employees, going to hire 50 employees or bring, with wages of around $62,000 average salary. So currently Olympus underwrites about 70,000-plus insurance policies in the state of Florida, and they used our targeted expediting program, permitting program, to get their facility up and running and make the decision to move to Palm Beach Gardens. So, you know, you've got to track businesses to this area. We don't want to be a community of 40,000 homes and nothing else, so bringing corporate partners like this in, not only from inside Florida but outside of Florida as well down here, with jobs that are above market average as far as salaries, is always a good thing, so we look forward to an event for them to get them recognized, so we're glad Olympus is here as well.
And that's all I have, and let's move on to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I wasn't going to talk about the Honda Classic, but I guess you've covered that pretty well, except for the fact that, you know, with that major event, weather event that occurred on Saturday, staff is proud of the fact that we were always doing our training, and we had done training the week before for something similar to this, which was a non-hurricane event, and planning on how we would conduct our business and how we would be able to respond to an emergency. Fortunately, the training paid off as much as possible. We've learned a lot from the event, but very proud of the conduct of our city employees and staff members that responded to that emergency. When those severe storms rolled in, there were thousands of people to evacuate from all over the golf course, and it was quite a challenge. But it was met, and as you can see here, some of the activities as far as the tents being blown across the lake and trees being downed, and even our police officers helping the visitors with their strollers getting into the bus. So our police officers, firefighters, paramedics were out there in force, trying to make sure that we could evacuate everyone as safely as possible. So very proud of them and appreciate the work that they all do. And we just got the number for the attendance this year, it's 165,200. That's a little down from last year, but considering the weather issues we had, I guess you could expect that, so just wanted to bring you up to date on that. The next thing I'd like to talk about is our CAS program, which is Community Action Support Team. On Saturday, the 21st, the team, with the help of Solid Waste Authority's Rebuilding Together program, repaired this home on Bamboo Drive. It's pressure washed, landscaped, painted, and just general cleanup from someone who was unable to take this task on themselves. And code enforcement gets the bad end of the deal sometimes, because they're always enforcing city rules and regulations, and it's not a popular position to be in. But this is a group of men and women that are dedicated to this community. They went out on their own time, and there was an article, as you can see, written here on February 22, with a grateful appreciation by the homeowner about the staff's coordination, and brought her property into compliance and prevented further violations. So I'd just like to acknowledge Anjali Mar, Mohammed Jamal, Rose Thuch, Nirva Chivannas, and Ismail Vasquez, and Scott Danyowski. I wish we could get some Smiths and Joneses, but I don't seem to have any here. But they're great employees, they're on their own time, and they're out there volunteering to help someone who can't help themselves in this community. This is not their first time. There's also a house across the street received the same help not too long ago. So I'd just like to recognize those people for going above and beyond the call of duty to help a neighbor, so for that. The other item I bring to your attention, we have added to the agenda Resolution 14, which is a resolution providing conceptual approval of Project Diamond, the economic development incentives from the city for this Project Diamond. We were given final approval to move forward with this, and as you know, this is, the whole idea behind the economic development is mandated by Florida state statutes. They set the rules, we have to follow the rules. Once given the authority to move forward, and there were reasons why we couldn't move forward prior to this, we set this for the agenda on Tuesday. I did contact the Palm Beach Post, that was on Tuesday. The what? The 3rd, yes, I forgot the date. So we did contact the Palm Beach Post and let them know so that we could get the word out as best we could. We put it on the website, the agenda, get the word out the best we could, but we were limited by certain restrictions that we have to live by as far as confidentiality is concerned, regardless of what you read in the newspaper. I can't talk about it, and neither can the council, for that matter, as far as certain elements of this is concerned. So I'm sorry I had to come to you so late, but we had no choice. We have to get it on before the county commission for their issue on March 10th. So it's a new add-on to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the public, items not on the agenda?
Good evening, all. I have general comments about development and zoning and concerns I've had for a while. I'll use Averna just as an example. Developer or investor buys a piece of land, it automatically comes with zoning. Every piece of land in the city has zoning in place, it has a comp plan use in place. So Averna, I believe, was 400-plus houses is what could be built there. So my concern is that a developer comes in and they want to do 2,000 to 4,000 houses. You're elected by the residents who are here, not the residents who aren't here yet. And so I would hope that you just say no. We don't need all the existing residents that are here impacted by something that may prove negative to the rest of us who are already here. So I would just recommend, don't give away the farm when we don't have to. Give you an example, you bought your house, you knew that you couldn't tear it down and put up a 40-story condo. Your neighbors wouldn't like that too much. So if somebody comes here and you approve that, then you're impacting everybody else around there. More importantly, you knew your neighbor couldn't tear their house down and put up a 40-story condo and impact the neighborhood. So you have been elected to represent all the residents. You have individual opinions, but your opinions really should come from representing all of the residents, and the residents that voted you in that are here. So I would just recommend that when big projects come to you, and they immediately want waivers and they immediately want zoning changes and comp plan changes, there are limitations, so please protect the rest of us and you, who also live here. So, thank you.
David, what's your address?
I'm sorry, 11 Gintyre Gardens.
Great, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Iris Schabel, 1029 Sienna Oaks. I recognize what you said, Mr. Ferris, about the confidentiality in BDB issues with Resolution 14, and can understand why it came late on the agenda, and don't have an issue with that. But I do wish that it be brought from consent agenda to regular agenda where you could share with us what you can. If there are, I mean, you're going forward with approving potential financial and other incentives, and if you can describe, without going into the kind of detail that the Post, whether or not theirs was accurate or not, describe the kinds of issues that are related to the thing. You've certainly probably been given presentations by the BDB or had some information shared with you, and in the interest of transparency and not creating the similar impression to what we had with the stadium, that things are being kept from the community, that you could put it on the agenda with some kind of presentation. Because it's not that there would be opposition. I know that a few of you have polled items before and had presentations brought from consent, and they've been invaluable, and they've been useful in sharing. And as you know, perception can become reality, and I for one would prefer that the perception of the city be one of open and transparent government. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We didn't coordinate this, I just had a couple of things I was thinking when I read the article this morning about Resolution 14, and I heard a few days before that something was going to come up and be on the agenda. There wasn't a lot of, there was some information that was put in your package, and since it's there, I assume it's not confidential anymore, and I just wondered if you could comment on a couple of things that were in there. One is that the Brigger DRI had set aside 100 acres for Scripps. That was one of the, one of two conditions that were in there. And I understand that, I guess, the 30 acres that Scripps has built on now in Alcoa is 30 of 100, but there's another 70 that they were going to be basically guaranteed for Scripps development within the Brigger tract. The current, so my question would be, you know, is Scripps part of Project Diamond, and have they agreed to give up their rights to development in Brigger? With that, the state and the county put up $600 million, give or take, for Scripps development, you know, 10, 12 years ago. That was going to be a promise of 50,000 jobs at the time, as you recall, and that would have been about $12,000 per job to bring it in if that happened. Now with the current staffing levels of, you know, the 500 range, it's really more like a million dollars a job is what Scripps costs to bring in. Since the numbers that were shown in your package today had $630,000 for this project plus 10 years of property tax relief, 50% in the last few years, for a $115 million project, my calculations tell me that you're basically going to allocate about $5 million to this, which is about $11,000 per job. And I just wondered if you're sure about all that, and if that's not maybe going to be making the same mistake as Scripps. And last, it seems that if this is indeed going to be using the part of the Brigger tract that was set aside for Scripps, well, the promise was made to Scripps by the city, by the county, and by the state when that came out, it was part of the thing that brought them here. And I'm wondering if we're going to go back on that, or if that's going to change in any way, are we, pretty much as a city, declaring that the era of big bioscience in Palm Beach County is over? Thank you.
Just need name and address.
Fred Schabel, 1029 Sienna Oaks, Circle Drive.
Thank you, Fred.
Excuse me, Mayor, I just want to make one comment on this. Is number one, we were, Iris said that we were all presented by the BDB. Nobody was presented anything, okay? We got, basically, we have what's on the agenda tonight, and that's it. Project Diamond is Project Diamond. Where it is, where it's going, how big it is, how it impacts anything else, nobody knows, okay? We don't, okay? And as far as, we can't comment on it, because we don't know anything about it, okay? But it is a project, all the numbers, what you have is what we have, and what the city But it is a project, all the numbers, what you have is what we have, and what the city manager said earlier, that we are proving, approving something conceptually, okay? And that's basically where we're at. There's nothing else, and unfortunately, we did go through this with baseball, and part of the rules of how this goes, it can't be as transparent as it, as you maybe would like it, for protection of, of the companies and the confidentiality, but that's the way it is. We're not really, this thing is not approving anything, where it's going and so forth, all we know is what we've done in the past. We've always paid dollars to bring companies here, okay, to provide jobs and economy. And if you take a look at, at what we've done so far with the many companies that we've brought here, they've been very successful, and it's made PGA Boulevard where it is, where the companies have located. But we can't comment on it because we don't know anything about it. I mean, and that's just the way it is. All I know, okay, is I'm willing to pay X amount of dollars that's in there for those jobs, to bring them here for, for exactly what's there, and that's it. There's nothing else we can discuss. I mean, that's...
And I think, Fred, you'll get a lot more, maybe, information on your Scripps questions from the county. I would assume you're going to go to the county meeting next week, if there's discussion on that, because we don't really know about the set asides or what they're doing on that.
But I don't know that they're going to be any different than us. They're going to be the same as us.
Those are questions that he wants to address, those particular to the county, he needs to put them on the record and address them down there, I would say. So...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we don't even know, what we read in the papers more than we know, and I don't even know if it's true.
It's unfortunate, but that's, you know, the way it is today.
That's the way it is.
Uh, Carol Courtney? Did I say that, is that last name right?
Yes.
Okay.
For the record, Carol Courtney, 8511, 40th Terrace North, Palm Beach Gardens. And I'm here to discuss the tree. Um, the renovation being done on Sunset and 40th Terrace. It's wonderful, I see the, the water starting to go in, I'm so happy. I don't know if any of you have ever been down to the end of the street, but outside of the fact that it was a dirt road, and there were things that needed to be done, it's very charming, and it's mostly because of the trees. And anybody who has been down there, including the people that are now laying the pipe, and the surveyors or whatever, they look and they go, "Oh, that's ridiculous." Alls you have to do is change it a little bit, you don't have to cut down those beautiful trees. And, to me, it, it just seems weird that on Sunset, which is going to have more traffic than 40th Terrace, you just have like this turnaround, which is all that can fit, but it's for the fire trucks or whatever else that has to be turned around, and plus, that's very close to the canal, that's kind of scary thinking about that. But, why have this huge, huge, huge cul-de-sac on 40th Terrace when it has less than, all right, well, maybe 30% of the, the traffic that's on Sunset? I'm not sure, I'm just grasping straws there. When you could do just a turnaround there and not have to cut down these beautiful, beautiful trees? I just don't get it. I mean, why? It just doesn't make sense. And I swear, if any of you could come down there and look at the way it's laid out, you'd go, "Oh, well, why didn't they see that?" So, I'm stymied. If anybody can give me a reason that I can understand, I'd appreciate it.
Do you want to go into the design again? Is Todd here? Todd?
He talked to me last week, and, I mean, last month, and it...
I'm sure Mr. Engel, our city engineer, could get with you and discuss it, but, you know, one of the things is, the, the road right-of-way on 40th Terrace belongs to the city, and the preference of both fire rescue and police is to have a, a turnaround, a cul-de-sac, as you call it. As far as the other is concerned, with a three-point stop for your turn, it was, uh, per, the land that was going to have to be purchased, and, um, so, we were trying to keep the cost down for the residents. If the residents want a cul-de-sac down there, we can certainly consider buying more land from the property owner and put a cul-de-sac in.
Kevin's the property owner on both sides, where the cul-de-sac and the turnaround is going. Why have a turnaround on one end and one end?
Kevin doesn't own the property where that cul-de-sac is. He's inhabited that property, but that property's never been his.
Oh...
That cul-de-sac area has never been his.
Well, then, why were you talking about the property owners?
We're not buying the cul-de-sac from Kevin. We're buying the turnaround on Sunset from Kevin, and the easement to run the water pipe down the, down the, down the east side to loop it. That cul-de-sac just down there, um, has always been designated as, as a, there were, there were public, there were access easements across it, it was always there, and it was taken.
Have, have you been down there? It just seems silly, I mean, why not trade the, I mean, it just, why cut down the tree? It just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Easton?
Good evening, for the record, Kevin Easton, 8511, 40th Terrace North. I've got a lot, a lot of items here, and I won't be able to make it through all of them, but, uh, yesterday, I didn't hear anybody talk about this historic event that we had, which was putting the pipes, the very first pipes down our street. After 13 years, we finally got progress, and I'd like to thank everybody that's involved in getting this done. But, uh, like I heard about this, uh, Forget Me Not Child Safety Program, uh, and I think that's a beautiful thing, but I think the city really drops the ball when it comes to pedestrian safety. Again, uh, we asked for sidewalks down there on 40th Terrace, there's plenty of room to put the sidewalks, yet there are no sidewalks. We don't have a formal or standard sidewalk policy here in Palm Beach Gardens. As council members, I think that safety should be one of your foremost concerns, and try to even go back through these neighborhoods and put in sidewalks, be job creators, do something to, to help the neighborhood, to help the people. Uh, I think I mentioned the article that I read about, uh, how sidewalks build communities, that people can walk to their, uh, local grocery stores, to the malls, they are healthier. And then, let's think about the safety part of it as well, that's, that's, that's paramount, and I think that that's something that the city should be, should be doing. That's something that our, that the owners in my neighborhood also ask for on 40th Terrace. Now, I know that you couldn't put them in on supposedly Sunset because there's not enough room, but we never thought about the meandering sidewalks. We, we should think about that. That, that place is very, uh, tenant, or what do you want to call it, residential heavy, I'd say, it's not, there's a lot of people there. But, uh, you know, and we should consider that, and I think that that's something the city should think about, is safety throughout the whole city, not just for child safety and, and the Forget Me Not Program, but pedestrian safety. Uh, I wish I had, I, I tried to bring, I got a flash drive, but they wouldn't let me present these pictures. Yesterday, when I was going home, I saw the gentleman, he's in a walker, he's trying to walk into the Publix, uh, the Publix, uh, Shopping Center, okay? He's fighting two lanes of traffic, and he's in the road because there is no sidewalk. This poor gentleman could hardly move, but he was going to, he was making his way to Publix, okay? What are we doing to help these people? To, and I just don't understand it, and I've been here before talking about this, and I know it's, I, I sound passionate, and I'm sorry, but this is just something that's been bothering me for a long time. Uh, there's so many other things that I want to talk about, this is the sister company for all, from all aboard, I was here at the meeting, I was listening to the people. Have we talked to them guys? I know I've switched gears here, you know, but there's, there's just so many things, and three minutes really isn't enough. I asked for questions on this tree that Carol was talking about here. Everybody looks at me, and I got, "Well, when I give up my rights to the property, well, then we'll talk about it," okay? I don't understand it, but I, I really hope that you guys think about the safety of the people. You look at these projects that you're really doing, and, and I asked for, uh, the Planning and Zoning Board to look at this, and they said, "No, we don't have to," okay? Well, why wouldn't you get the best amount of people looking at this, these issues, and get the brains going on this? Uh, I've submitted several designs, nobody's cared about them, we could have saved a lot of money. I'm sorry, my time's up, and, you know, I just don't know what to say, but I certainly wish that somebody would come down here and look at the trees, look at the area, and give me some answers, and think about the safety of the residents in our city. Not just the children, but the residents on my street and every other street that don't have sidewalks.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, I'm going to move on to consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move consent agenda.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 5-0. Tonight, we are holding quasi judicial hearings on the following cases. Resolution 13, 2015, major conditional use for restaurant with drive-through within the Banyan Tree PUD. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations, and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening, or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Let me make one note, if you have given me a comment card tonight to speak on the Banyan project, you need to be sworn in, so if you have not stand up previously, or any other pro, yeah, please stand up. I have, I have like 15 comment cards, I didn't see 15 people. So anybody talking on the Banyan PUD project?
That's the only one, yeah.
If you've, if you've already been sworn in, you can sit down. The clerk needs to swear everybody in, but I have a lot of cards, and I don't see a lot of people, so I just want to make sure you're all sworn in before we move on to that down the road. Okay? Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
All right, thank you very much. First up is ordinance 1, 2015, will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance 1, 2015, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 land development by repealing Section 78-290, temporary signs allowed, and re-adopting same as revised. In order to adopt regulations relating to human signs, further amending Chapter 78 at Section 78-751 definitions, by adopting the definition of human signs, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 78 land development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Can hold the public hearing and ask if anything has changed, it's first reading.
Basically, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, if you recall from first reading, uh, the city council directed staff, uh, and myself to, uh, get in contact with the people that, uh, the business owners that spoke about the, uh, about the ordinance at first reading, and, uh, did so, talked to them, took their comments into consideration, had discussions with staff and the city manager, and there are some changes between first and second reading as it relates to the legislative intent of the ordinance and the whereas clauses that are, that were added to the ordinance, and to further, um, expand upon and clarify the city council's legislative intent and the adoption of the ordinance, but as it relates to substantive regulations to the signage, staff is not recommending any changes between first and second reading.
We have any questions on that? I do have one comment card, Tom Carnes.
I'm here, Tom Carnes, 3101 PGA Boulevard. Uh, I'm here tonight on behalf of the PGA Corridor Association, and, uh, first of all, I know this is, uh, not exactly about the signs, but I would like to extend our congratulations to the Police Department also, for, uh, getting their accreditation, uh, again this year, and also commend, uh, the Fire Department, Police Department. Not everybody realizes what a great, great, how great these departments are, and what benefit it is to everyone in the city, and particularly the businesses, that we end up with lower insurance premiums as a result of how great both these departments are, under the, uh, the guidance of the city manager. So, congratulations, and please keep up the good work. Um, so anyway, I'm here tonight on behalf of the PGA Corridor Association, I've been, was the original president of the PGA Corridor Association, and rarely have we ever had a unanimous vote, but when we talked about the human signs, the, uh, the Statue of Liberty there, "I'll do your taxes," the guy wrapped in the gold chains, "I'll pay more for the chains," and this and that, out on PGA Corridor, no, it was unanimous vote to oppose this. This just is not right on PGA Corridor, and within the PGA Corridor, and I don't, personally, I don't think it's right within the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Look, there's about, there's, um, probably 600 retail establishments on PGA Boulevard, and, and another 400, 500 smaller businesses that, you know, if this is allowed a couple days a year, and everybody decides to exercise their option to go out and do this thing a couple days a year, I mean, you could have five, six of these, uh, people out there dancing every day, and I don't think that's what you want. I would suggest that you just make it as easy as possible on, on code enforcement and the Police Department and everything, and just don't allow human signage on, uh, on the PGA Corridor. Um, you know, there are other ways to handle it. If you want to get people in your business, you know, you run, add to newspaper, you have a promotion for, you know, buy a cup of coffee and you get a donut or, or whatever, but, uh, these people out there dancing in the street, it just, um, it's not the message that, uh, that we think that, uh, the city of Palm Beach Gardens wants, and certainly not within the PGA Corridor. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Tom?
Thank you.
This ordinance regulates this. Currently, there is no regulation on it. I think you're, I think the corridor association is probably in favor of us passing this ordinance, because currently, there is no regulation on them, they can do whatever they want. This now regulates them and actually makes them stand away from the right-of-way of the road, and puts them back, and actually creates regulation that didn't previously exist. So I would actually think that the corridor association would be in favor of it.
So what is it, Roseanne, Roseanne, Deanna used to say? Oh, sorry? David, we're, we don't want to see them, be them on the curb, on the sidewalk, wherever.
We're in favor of it.
We just, well, we don't think you should have them at all. We don't think it's the right message for the city.
Uh, we're actually in the point where, right now, they are regulated, they can do whatever they want, so this is making it more restrictive, I understand what you're saying.
We're very much in favor of regulation to the point that, that they're not allowed.
Okay. All right, all right, thank you.
Just to be clear. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, anybody else wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing, and spring it back up for a quick discussion. No comments? Any comments? Any comments? Okay. Okay, well, it's up to you guys, what you want to do.
Mr. Chairman, move ordinance 1, 2015 on second reading and adoption.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 5-0. Next up is ordinance 2, 2015, will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance 2, 2015, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending the city of Palm Beach Gardens budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2014, and ending September 30, 2015, inclusive, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Can hold on the public hearing and ask for a staff presentation?
Oh, I got it, I'm sorry, yes, hold on. Good evening, Mayor and Council, for the record, Mary Anderson Pickle, Deputy Finance Administrator. I'm here tonight to present ordinance 2, 2015, amending the current year fiscal budget. Generally accepted accounting principles require the city to carry forward funds appropriated for prior-year obligations to be paid in the new fiscal year. This ordinance amends the current year budget for purchase orders and commitments related to projects that cross fiscal years. Significant projects that we're carrying forward in the general fund, we have the construction of Fire Station 2 for 2.5 million, Marisol Park Playground Equipment, 250,000, the Plaza Enhancements, 191,000, the Radio Consortium, 170,000. In our gas tax fund, we have our bridge refurbishment program of 632,000, and our stormwater master plan report of 100,000. Continuing in our Recreation Impact Fund, we have City Park Phase 3, 800,000, Tennis Center Expansion Phase 3, 770,000, Plant Lilac Park Expansion, 131,000, and the PGA Park, 119,000. In our Road Impact Fund, we have the Johnson Dairy Military Trail Enhancements. In our Capital Improvement Fund, we have the water and road, uh, road improvements on Sunset and 40th for 1.5 million. Section 166.241 of the Florida statutes require that amounts available from taxation and other sources, including amounts carried over from prior fiscal years, must equal total appropriations for expenditures and reserves. To ensure budgeted... To ensure budgeted expenditures and reserves do not exceed original estimates of carryover balances and revenues, it is customary to adjust these balances to actual year-end amounts. Significant adjustments by fund. The general fund, we are increasing the Budget Stabilization Reserve Fund by $3.2 million. Our Gas Tax Fund, we are actually decreasing the restricted reserves by $867,000. Our Road Impact Fund, we are increasing restricted reserves, $131,000. Our Fleet Maintenance Fund, we are increasing our unrestricted reserves by $66,000. Recreation Impact Fund, we are increasing our restricted reserves, excuse me, $157,000. And in our Self-Insurance Fund, we are increasing our unrestricted reserves for $260,000. Other budget adjustments tonight, staff is recommending three transfers from the Budget Stabilization Reserve. The first one is the purchase of golf maintenance equipment for $384,000, a transfer to the Gas Tax Special Revenue Fund for $301,000, and to replace our Youth Enrichment Special Needs Fund for $45,100. Inclusive of these transfers, our ending balance in the Budget Stabilization Fund is $5,918,310. Staff is recommending approval of Ordinance 2, 2015, as presented on first reading, and I will be happy to answer any questions, if I may.
Any questions of staff on those items? Anybody wishing to speak for or against any of those items? Any comments? Come on up, Kevin.
I have been sworn in, but I was just curious about the $1.5 million that they said that they, for the improvements for Sunset and Fortieth. Can we just talk about that? How does that work? I mean, she said--
The $1.5 million, that was allocated in last year's budget for the costs for the expected project cost for this year.
Yes. Now, the owners are going to pay for that, or you're going to get that reimbursed, or that's what you're going to kick into the project?
No, that's the actual cost we're expecting of the project, and then that will be allocated in the, out of LORAM taxes going forward, starting next year.
Okay. And then, but the owners will be paying that.
What's that?
The owners will be paying the $1.5 million back, right?
Yes, correct. Over twenty years, twenty years of the fixed rate that we gave based on the city funds.
Very good. Just wanted to make sure that, you know, you guys, okay.
Understand. Patty, do you need another card from Kevin on that comment? Kevin, just fill out another card when you can. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back up for a discussion or a vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Ordinance 2, 2015 on first reading.
Second.
Got a motion, two seconds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes 5-0. Next up, Ordinance 3, 2015. Will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance 3, 2015, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 land development at Section 78-285, permanent signs, Table 24, permanent signs, by amending gasoline price sign and ground sign types in order to add additional requirements related to gasoline price signage, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 78 land development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Can open the public hearing. Has anything changed since first reading?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Natalie Crowley, Director of Planning and Zoning. And no, there have been no changes since first reading on the proposed ordinance. Just to generally recap, this ordinance is an ordinance in conflict with the proposed vehicle ordinance that was passed by Palm Beach County that will provide the same intent toward consumer protection, but it will just propose an alternate method that will be more legible and clear for all of those gas stations within the city's jurisdiction. Staff has worked with the gas station owners. They are in full support. There's a six-month period for this ordinance to, it is effective immediately, but there's a six-month compliance period in which the gas station owners will be able to get their signs produced, to be able to modify their signs, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. When was the county program supposed to start? What's the date?
It came into effect in April.
April 1st?
Of this April.
Okay. Thank you. I do have one comment card, or any questions of staff? You've seen this. Jay Goldwasser? Sorry, Jay. Name and address.
Jay Goldwasser, 4750 Donald Ross Road. I'd just like to say that the county passed this ordinance, and they sent me a copy as a gas station owner. And I emailed Hal Valeci, who spearheaded it, the county commissioner, and I told him, "Hal, you want me to put all these numbers on my sign? Palm Beach Gardens only allows me a certain area for changeable price sign. What do I do?" And basically, his answer was, "Too bad." So, yeah, I was amazed, and that's when I contacted staff and she talked to all the other people. So I'd just like to say that the city staff has been very business-friendly with this.
Great. Thanks. Thank you, Jay. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and bring it back up for discussion or a vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Ordinance 3, 2015 on second reading and adoption.
Second.
Motion, two seconds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes 5-0. Jay, thank you for your comments again. Next up, we have Ordinance 5, 2015. Will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance 5, 2015, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending its comprehensive plan to update the city's 10-year water supply facilities work plan in accordance with the mandate set forth in Sections 163.3177 and 163.3184 Florida statutes, providing amendments to the future land use, infrastructure, conservation, intergovernmental coordination, and capital improvements elements related to the 10-year water supply facilities work plan, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Can open the public hearing and ask for a staff presentation, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Dawn Sonnenborn with Planning and Zoning. This is the 10-year water supply plan--
Is your mic on?
Pardon me?
Thank you.
Is that better?
Bring it up closer. Thank you.
The 10-year water supply facilities work plan update. This is required by the Florida statutes. When the Lower East Coast Water Supply Plan by the South Florida Water Management District, when they update their plan, all municipalities are supposed to update their plan as well. So that's what we're doing. We coordinated with Sea Coast Utilities on this to provide the water supply plans for the future, to serve future development, amend the related policies in the comp plan that go along with the update, and we transmit this to the state, the DEO, for review, and we also coordinated with the I-Park Committee as well. And just the minor updates that occurred was population and population projections, the existing conditions, the current and projected water supply demands. And there's a slight adjustment to the city's level of service standard for the potable water. It was lowered a little bit from 191 to 189, and that is per the 20-year consumptive use permit. And on February 10th, the Planning and Zoning and Appeals Board recommended transmittal to DEO with a vote of 5 to 0, and staff recommends approval of Ordinance 5, 2015, and transmittal to DEO.
Any questions of staff? No? It's funny, when I was up in Tallahassee at one of those meetings, they were talking about some water issues, and they said in the last 20 years, gallon usage per individual has actually gone down.
That's quite a lot.
Yeah. It's pretty amazing.
That's due to low-flow heads and, you know, toilets and washing machines. Washing machines use a lot less power today than they used to.
A lot more efficient. Okay.
So, yeah, that's actually been a trend since about the eighties, mid-eighties, where consumption's gone down.
Anybody wishing to speak for or against this exciting item?
I find it exciting.
Seeing none? We're going to close the public hearing, bring it back up for a discussion or a vote.
David, no comments?
I'm going to move Ordinance 5, 2015 on first reading.
I'll second it. I have to say that staff put a lot of effort into writing this. I read all of it. It was a very interesting synopsis and a lot of information, including all the annexation areas and the maps that were put into this. It was a lot of work, and I appreciate your effort.
Population graphs. Nice job. Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Next up is ordinance, excuse me, Resolution 13, 2015. Will the clerk read the title?
Resolution 13, 2015, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an application from Northlake Place to LLC to amend the Banyon Tree PUD to allow the major conditional use of restaurant with drive-through and to allow Phase 2 of the PUD to be developed with three separate single-story buildings consisting of 18,016 square feet of restaurant use, 1,000 square feet of restaurant with drive-through use, and 10,200 square feet of retail use. The Banyon Tree PUD is comprised of approximately 12.64 acres and is generally located on the northwest and northeast corners of MacArthur Boulevard and Northlake Boulevard, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Send yours.
We're going to open the public hearing and ask for any expertises.
Yes, I met with a couple of residents of Lake Catherine on this issue.
I met with, I'm going to hopefully say this name correctly, but Pamela Pocoli Hagerty, Robert Bianco, and Kenneth Kessler. That's it.
None.
None for me? Okay. Besides our staff presentations and then all the emails that we got from various residents in that area, so thank you for sending those in.
And I did receive a lot of emails in regards to this project.
Ditto on emails and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll have a petitioner presentation, please.
Well, good evening, council members. For the record, Donaldson here, here tonight on behalf of Mr. Robert Dizel, who's here with us this evening. Also, we have with us Mr. Keith Spina with Glidden, Spina &amp; Partners, and our traffic engineer, Mr. Adam Kerr with Kimley Horn &amp; Associates. And this is a good project, and we're excited to be able to share it with you. I know that there are a lot of residents that are here. I think that there's some fear of the unknown, and I think as we walk you through the project, you'll see the many merits. And in keeping with some of the discussions that David Porter had earlier, we're not modifying the zoning. What we're proposing is consistent with the zoning, and we're not modifying the land use because what we're proposing is consistent with the land use. And we think very much so consistent with the Northlake Boulevard corridor.
I think the--
Is it a little bit weak? Yeah. I can just talk a little bit louder.
For once, we can't hear you very well.
That's unusual for me.
Usually, we hear you loud enough.
Well, then, I'll just lean forward a little bit. The site that we're here to talk about today is the Banyon Tree PUD. It's located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, right at MacArthur Boulevard. Lake Catherine is located to the immediately north of the site. We have the Lake Catherine Park, which is located north of the site as well, on the east side of MacArthur Boulevard, and Costco to the south. So this is, it's a special area. In fact, many, many years ago, I was the land planner and landscape architect for Lake Catherine, was very, very proud of that project, and I think it turned out very good. And I recall when we brought Lake Catherine through many, many years ago, we actually had residents in the older section of Palm Beach Gardens actually come out with some concerns, and Lake Catherine has turned out to be a very beautiful and sustainable project, as is the one that we're proposing for you today. Specifically, we're here to talk about Phase 2. It's about 3.7 acres in total size. It's vacant. There are some existing improvements on the property as it exists today. There's an existing access that extends from Northlake Boulevard to MacArthur Boulevard. That's in place today. It's utilized by those folks who would be utilizing the Blood Bank component, and it's a shared piece of infrastructure between the two properties. Of course, the east side of MacArthur Boulevard is developed. It is important to note that on the east side, they actually have three points of ingress and egress. One, right at the tree itself, one at the north end of the site on Banyon, and then one on Northlake Boulevard. This subject site, both the Blood Bank and the subject parcel have two access points, and that's all that's being sought. The Blood Bank is to the immediate west. There's a few smaller buildings on the Phase 3 portion, which is Palm Beach Community Bank. There's an empty restaurant parcel that's there that's currently vacant, and a two-story office building which has a variety of users in it. Our request is for an amendment to the PUD. That's the vehicle in which we are to come forward. We're requesting that modification. The petition includes one conditional use request, and the conditional use is to allow for a fast casual restaurant with a drive-through. And let me provide some foundation to that. That's a very small restaurant. It's only a thousand square feet is what has been requested, and so we're not proposing to do McDonald's. This is a very small restaurant that would be located in actually the back portion of our site. The project is mixed-use, and it's in a mixed-use district, and we're proposing to provide a commercial center that will serve the local area. And I think it's important to emphasize this. We're not proposing a regional commercial establishment. We're not, we're proposing a local commercial area that will have local tenants that are really intended to serve this neighborhood. We're not proposing to have tenants such as, and there's nothing wrong with Costco, but Costco is a regional attractant. People come from Jupiter, from West Palm, they go to Costco. They're coming from out of the area to go here. We're looking at a local neighborhood retail store. There's no anchor. We don't have a Publix, we don't have a Home Depot, we don't have a Walgreens. We hope to have a Chipotle. In fact, the Chipotle is looking at going here if we can get this approved and moving forward tonight. So somebody who's using Chipotle on PGA Boulevard is going to go to Midtown, but somebody who's on Northlake Boulevard would go to this as a local store. So it's intended to be neighborhood-oriented. We did take the opportunity to meet with the residents of Lake Catherine on two occasions. We, I would tell you that our meetings with them and the concerns that were raised during those meetings informed the way that we move forward with the project, informed the changes in the plan that we had worked on with staff. We moved some buildings and did a number of things, increased some landscape buffers as a result of that. And I would tell you, while there's a number of people that are here tonight who have, perhaps will speak in opposition, there were people at that meeting that were in favor. I had the opportunity to run into Jack Hanson, who is the former and most, one of the original building officials here for the City of Palm Beach Gardens. Jack came up to me and said, "Don, this is a good project." And he actually, I think he stood up and, at least with a few people around us, and said, "Listen, I know your architect, Keith Spina, and John Glidden. I know the body of work that you guys have, and I'm confident that it is a good project." And that it is, and we've actually made many changes since that time. We've increased our buffering on the north property boundary, we increased our setback on the north boundary, and we've actually decreased the number of drive-through uses. Our original plan had two proposed drive-through uses, and we only have one. And again, we think that that is important because this is a niche center. Northlake Boulevard is a unique area to do retailing, so you have to be very thoughtful about how you do it because it's not PGA Boulevard. It's different. The site is, I said, 3.8 acres. We're proposing 29,216,000 square feet of use, of which there's 19,000 square feet allocated to potentially restaurants. It might not be 19,000 square feet. This is not an overutilization of the site. This is less than 10,000 square feet per acre. This is at a very low floor area ratio. It's actually a point, you know, a point 1, a point 1.7 FIR, which is relatively low. It's not your typical FIR at this, these particular sites are anywhere from .25 to the previous application, which had 50,000 square feet of medical office and office, which was probably up and around, close to a .3 FIR. We have substantial open space in plaza areas as well as pervious area. We meet and/or exceed our parking requirements, and of course, this is a mixed-use center, so there's a lot of different uses that will complement one another. We're not using shared parking, but because it is one PUD, there's certainly that opportunity. There's ample parking within the overall plan and the development. I pointed out that there are two points of ingress and egress. We're only asking for two points of ingress and egress. One on Northlake Boulevard for westbound traffic. There's an existing right-turn lane at that location. That is a shared access point with the Blood Bank. That exists today and will remain. The second access point is the existing access point that exists at the north end of the site on MacArthur Boulevard. Again, we're not looking at adding any additional access points, but just maintaining those two. We think that that is appropriate. We've done something a little bit different, and I would tell you that this is actually consistent-- consistent with the Northlake Boulevard overlay. It's something that this council has promoted on PGA Boulevard and others, and that is we've brought our buildings to the street. We're hiding our parking. We've brought the buildings to the street. We have all landscaping between the street and the, and the, and the buildings, and the parking is in the back. I'll tell you that most retailers today that aren't as sophisticated as, as our client really would generally want the parking in the front. It's hard to get people to do this. But we think that this is good, and we think that it will actually be transformational on Northlake Boulevard. It will begin to transform the corridor with, with, with a look and begin to hide parking and be, perhaps set a good redevelopment pattern to move forward. So we have two buildings on Northlake Boulevard with a courtyard in between, and then we have one building, which is a small retail building that's located in the back portion of the site. And again, none of these buildings are of significantly large size. As you know, typically, a CVS or something like that would be about 13,000 to 15,000 square feet. We're much, much smaller than that in terms of our overall building sizes when you look at them individually, and certainly no anchors or boxes. We've provided a very large buffer along Lake Catherine. Those are one-story buildings that exist to the north. As you can see, there's a, those trees that I planted many, many years ago are very mature and have done very, very well. So there's a substantial buffer there today. There's a wall there today. There's a condition of approval that requires us to ensure that that wall gets cleaned, and we're proposing substantial landscaping. But in addition, our landscape buffer exceeds the minimum code requirement in terms of the required width, as well as the required plantings that are within it. So we've done the right thing as it relates to our interface with our neighbor, which really ensures and further demonstrates that this use is compatible with the, with the adjacent use. We have one drive-through, which was discussed. It is on the north building. We call it Building North. And we've set this up and have actually revised its configuration consistent with recommendations from your city engineer, so that circulation would actually come from around the building to get into that drive-through. That basically was a recommendation from your city engineer. And again, please understand, this is not McDonald's, it's not Taco Bell, it's not Burger King, it's, it, this would be a small, local restaurant, perhaps something like an Einstein's, perhaps a coffee shop. It could be a dry, a new, a drive-through dry cleaner. Tide Dry Cleaners, which is an all-green dry cleaner, is out there in the marketplace today, looking at places. This would be a perfect use for that. But, so there's just one drive-through that's there. This is in the back, and as you know, in, as it relates to the principles of retailing, a major, fast-food type of a venue, of course, would require significantly more square footage, but they would want to be right up on the roadway. So from a practical standpoint, this is not going to be the large concern which I believe a number of the residents have fears that it will be. You'll see in looking at our, our plan, we've really tried to work on connectivity between our buildings, between Northlake Boulevard and our courtyards. This is our landscape buffer along Lake Catherine, just to look at that visually. Again, there's a substantial landscape buffer there today. There's a wall. We're planting lots of additional plant material. Our buffer is a larger buffer than required by codes, so there's a minimum of 50 feet there when you look at the combined buffers. And then we've set our building back at least 100 feet, and so we think that it's an appropriate relationship between the properties. The architecture is very refreshing. This has been designed by John Glidden and Keith Spina. They're here, but we've worked diligently with staff to come up with something with some interest and some, and some character, some movement in the roofs, but yet something that's not just the same architecture we have everywhere, so we think it will provide some variety. This is what the view would look like from Northlake Boulevard, and so that you can see, not only have we done an excellent job in articulating the architecture, but the landscape design really also helps to shape that, 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 that street as really as a public space, as a shared space, as a public space of use. So you're seeing Northlake Boulevard in the, in the extreme foreground and our landscaping, our walkway. We've set some plaza areas that I'll show you. Each of those have a, a date poem in them, but it's been very carefully articulated. This is one of our other buildings on Northlake Boulevard. This is the extreme corner of Northlake and Banyon. Again, very, very nicely done, nicely landscaped. This is the actual landscaping that we've articulated utilizing Google SketchUp and other tools, so it's an accurate representation of what is, what is proposed. And this is just a straight-on view. Straight-on views are always misleading. We have two buildings, west building, east building, but again, very, very nice, really played up the corner as being the area of, of focus and importance, our back buildings. Just a little bit about Robert Deisel and the projects that we've had the opportunity to work on, with him on. And one is down on Okeechobee Boulevard, right at I-95, and it's called Palm Beach Marketplace, where Okeechobee Place is actually put together. Robert went into an area that was blighted. It was a blighted area in the, in the old CRA area of West Palm Beach and unincorporated Palm Beach County, provided, completely redid everything, redid the landscaping. The place is a botanical garden today. He wants to do the same thing here in Palm Beach Gardens. This has transformed the Okeechobee Boulevard corridor. And any of you who used to go to the old diner there located right at, right at Okeechobee Boulevard and I-95 know exactly what I'm talking about, because the only thing that used to be there was a Leada's, which has now been torn down, and the diner, which is now better than ever, doing better than ever, and in an area that really was an area where retailers would not come in. And so we think that he's taking the same passion that he's taken down in, 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 in West Palm and bringing it here. Same type of landscaping treatments that we're doing on the walls, like we have done here. Lot of use of color, really trying to create a special place. Northlake Boulevard, one of the, what we tried to do, there's a streetscape, there's a lot of variety in what happens with, what happens with the walkways. One of the things that you'll see in our plan that's a little bit different than just a curvilinear walkway is a walkway which has some curved forms, but really relates to the architecture. A strong relationship to the urban architecture, as opposed to not necessarily relating to it and doing something independent of that. And I'll show you what we have is, we're just looking at a close-up of the two buildings, and what we've done is created a series of plaza areas in which are connection points. So at each of the decision points, we've created a radius. We're reworking the sidewalk at the intersection of MacArthur Boulevard and, and Northlake, putting again, date poems in each of these plaza and brick paver areas. One of them might be used for art and public places, and you can see how they're articulated in the rendering, and those are fairly photorealistic renderings that we're proposing. As far as our signage, we anticipate having a variety of national tenants. Probably the majority of our tenants will be national tenants like, like Chipotle, so we would look at providing some variety, and I'll walk through some of those waivers shortly. Just some of our street sections, nice setback from the road. We're actually looking at the lawn area in between Northlake Boulevard and our, and the public sidewalk area will actually be done at Azuisia, so it'd be very done in a very nice, formal grass area. Our waivers, we have five waivers. The first is a waiver for our side corner setback on the Northlake Boulevard and MacArthur Boulevard corner. We think we've responded to that appropriately architecturally. Staff is supporting that. We've requested one additional ground sign, and again, this is of a, of a smaller variety, and staff is supporting that. We have a special signage program, and I'll run through that briefly, in where we're looking at having a few of the signs being slightly larger. And then we're also looking for some additional ground floor tenant signs for our corner buildings, and I'll show you that. And then we have one landscape buffer waiver, and where we're asking for a waiver, but we're actually maintaining the intent of that buffer. And, you know, having read some of the comments that we had received from the neighbors, we actually proposed an alternative to get some more buffering in that area, and I'll show you what that will look like. That'll actually increase our average to something that's greater than that, which is required by the code. First, the corner setback, it's really right at this location. Really, that is a location where we want the building to engage the corner. You've got a very large green area in the right-of-way, just because of the way of, that that particular roadway, right-of-way works. So we think that that's appropriate, and it's supported by your staff. We have one additional sign, which is located at the corner, which is, it's a ground sign that would facilitate our retail uses. And this is really where the landscape buffer is. We originally had proposed a two-foot landscape buffer in this area. It's due to the very unusual shape of the way that this road bows out. On the east side, they kind of accommodated it differently because they have an access point there, and so they were able to utilize the access point, which is generally paving, as a means of helping to mitigate for the odd configuration. So we had a two-foot setback, and I'll show you in the next slide, an alternative that we've worked out. You know, we did review what some of the residents put together. We think that this, their comment in this was, was valid, and now we have a seven-foot landscape buffer. The average goes from being a 20-foot average to being about 20.9-foot average, and we think that that's a good offer. We're also, as you may know, if you've looked at the plans, we are proposing landscaping along the side of the, of the sidewalk, in addition to what we've proposed here, which would still be, which would be another added benefit and further mitigates that request. So this buffer has increased to seven feet from the two feet we previously provided. As far as our signage, we are looking for two, this is what the code actually provides right here. The code provides two, what we call building ID signs, being at 36 inches in size, and then the remaining signs would be ground floor signs. And what we found is that with national tenants, they typically don't want to use just block letters. They want to use a script with a little bit of a logo, and at 24 inches, you really get limited in being able to see that. So when you add the logo, you add this, this script, and, which is sometimes upper and lower cases, you really need a little additional height to articulate that properly. And so while this is provided by code, what we have agreed to with the staff is to do something a little bit different. We eliminated one of our larger principal tenant ID signs. We've maintained three of the ground signs on the, along the, along the main road, but what we've asked for are some additional, total of five, a total of five additional ground signs, and just allowing those to be upsized by six inches. So instead of those signs being 24 inches, those signs are now 36 inches, or 30 inches in size. And we forgave, or what gave away, the one 36-inch principal tenant sign on the building that we refer to as Building West. And then, as we pointed out earlier, we have asked for signs, we have like a, a site, we have four-sided architecture, and we have asked for the ability to put signs on the corners, particularly needed in this building that's so far back, and staff is supporting that request. And so before I conclude, since there is so much discussion about traffic, I have asked our traffic engineer to kind of give us a quick traffic one-on-one and to discuss any traffic issues.
All right, thank you, Don. Adam Kerr with Kimble Horn and Associates. First and foremost-
Have you been to Hornin?
Yes, I've been to Hornin, yes. The, the traffic study has been approved by Palm Beach County Traffic Division, as well as by Palm Beach Gardens staff and their consultant. We've thoroughly reviewed the, the intersections in the area, all the way to I-95, as well as the specific driveway locations and the, the turn lanes at those, those locations, including the intersection of Northlake and MacArthur. And through that process, all of the, the intersections in the area and the turn lanes and driveways do meet the, the county and the city standards. These types of uses are complementary to the residential and school uses in the neighborhood, and what I mean by that is, when the, when the, the restaurants, for example, are at their peak operation, the, the school is not. The school peak hours are in the morning, and then school lets out around 4:00. 4:00 is typically low point in restaurant traffic. So in the morning, when there's school traffic, the retail uses, the retail and restaurant uses aren't very busy, and then in the evening, when, at lunch and in the evening, when the restaurant uses are very busy, the school isn't. Much of the traffic going in and out of this site will be oriented from Northlake Boulevard as well. And I'll, I'll, if you can follow my mouse, I can explain a little how the traffic will get in and out of the site. As Don mentioned, there are two primary access points, two, two access points. The existing right turn-in, right turnout location on Northlake with a turn lane that's existing today, and the, the local, the neighborhood access off of MacArthur Boulevard. So if you're coming from the west, traffic will either make a U-turn, the majority of the traffic will make the U-turn on Northlake to, to turn into the site, and that's because the majority of the-
Okay, okay, please, please let him finish his presentation. Thank you.
And that's because the majority of the, the restaurants in the retail space are oriented toward Northlake. Some of the traffic will utilize MacArthur and use this northern entrance as well, but that does, that does send them more to the back of the site. Pretty much all traffic from the east would use the Northlake entrance as well, and then the, the MacArthur entrance will be utilized for the traffic from the north, which is primarily the, the residential neighborhoods to the north to get in and out. The amount of traffic using this, this driveway, it's approximately one vehicle every other minute is the way that the, the amount of traffic that would be using that, based off of today's, compared to today's counts. It's actually even less traffic than that compared to what it was previously approved, approved at that location. As I said, the MacArthur driveway primarily serves the neighborhoods along MacArthur Boulevard and to the north, and a lot of the traffic on MacArthur right now will be alleviated. There's another project in the area that the county is working on, and that's the, the Congress Avenue extension, and that's, as you know, that's the extension of Congress Avenue from Northlake around to the north and ultimately to, to alternate A-1A. And so that will alleviate some of the traffic on Northlake in this area, as well as traffic that's currently cutting through MacArthur Boulevard to, to access alternate A-1A. So, and that is funded, that is in the county's five-year road program, funded in fiscal year 2018. So when that's, when that gets constructed, you actually see a decrease in traffic in the neighborhood. So in conclusion for traffic, like I said, it does meet the county's and the, the city's standards. The access will primarily be through the Northlake drive, the Northlake driveway location. The MacArthur Boulevard driveway is expected to, to serve the, the neighborhoods to the north, and much of the traffic that's out there, because of the uses, the restaurant and the retail uses, much of this traffic, almost 50% of the, the trips are already on the road today. So with that, I'll turn it back to Don.
Great, and I'll just close. Thank you very much, Adam. Just a couple of closing, closing points. There's a number of conditions of approval that have been agreed to, and they provide additional protections, and those are, as a result of what we heard from the residents. There's, there's limitations on the times and deliveries to the site. There's hours of limitations that have been agreed to and put into the conditions of approval relative to the operations of the uses on the site, and there's also conditions of approval relative to monitoring of traffic on Northlake Boulevard and on MacArthur Boulevard. So it's important to bring that out. And just lastly, before I close, because I believe that this is a, a very good project. So often today, I think that folks feel- So often today, I think that folks feel that, you know, this is new development, something that's not entitled, something that we're asking for above and beyond the requirements of the code. What we're asking for is fully consistent with the zoning code. This is a project that's been on the books for a long time. We think that it's a good project and will serve the area well and will further the redevelopment and the improvement of a corridor that really needs it. If any of our corridors needs some aesthetic enhancement, it's Northlake Boulevard. And we think that we have the opportunity to steer it in that direction. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any immediate questions now for the petitioner or traffic? Or do you want to hear?
I just had one.
Is that back building?
No, it's on.
How big is that back building?
I believe it's about 600.
Eight-one, I know.
Eight-one? Eighty-one hundred square feet.
Eighty-one hundred square feet. And is there going to be any signage on Northlake Boulevard to show what's in that back building?
That's what the monument sign is for that we've requested. So, you know, we'll have the ability to have signage on, you know, on the building. And then, we have a monument sign that's, that we've asked for right at the corner at Northlake Boulevard and Northlake.
And that'll have all the tenants in the back there?
It won't have all of the tenants. It will have our major tenants. And of course, we have asked for the ability to put signage on the corner there at MacArthur Boulevard. So, we think that we'll have good signage. Does it make it more difficult for retailing? Absolutely, that's why-
I don't want you coming back. You know, we just passed the spinner thing. We're not going to be able to spin it many-
No spinners, sir. We don't want spinners out.
Well, my point is, is that's a building that I think is going to be a hard retail sell for anybody, and I just don't want you coming back saying you need to do A, B, C, D, because we don't have tenants.
Well, I understand. That's why we've been so thoughtful, and Robert would tell you the same thing, so thoughtful about how we've done everything on this project, because we know what it takes to make this work, make this work. Retailing is different. The internet has changed things. There's a lot of, a lot of change that has occurred in the retail space. So, basically, what we find are those nationals that are providing services that want to be here. And if we do it right and we create the atmosphere like what has occurred down on Okeechobee Boulevard, we think people will want to be here. A lot of people go to Costco. So, if they could stop and pick up a service, or go to an AT&amp;T store, or go to a T-Mobile store, those are the types of uses that we would anticipate being here and that would do well.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah. Did the restaurants consider, are they, will they be closed for breakfast? Because we talked about interference with the afternoon traffic at the school, but not the morning traffic.
Well, you know, that's a great comment, because the traffic counts that you look at today, and Adam talked, you know, just briefly about the trips on Banyan Tree. But the traffic trips, we produce 30 a.m. trips more than the previous approval on this project, which was office, 50,000 square feet of office. The reason that you're seeing that 30 trips, it assumes that all the restaurants are open. We anticipate maybe having one restaurant, something like a First Watch, or maybe an Einstein's, that would be open for breakfast. You're not going to have more than that. I mean, you pretty much go to most of the places here in Palm Beach Gardens that have multiple restaurants. You're lucky if you have one restaurant that's open for breakfast. There's very, very few places in the city.
I guess, but there's no guarantee. If we approve this tonight, that you won't have three restaurants. One could be a Starbucks, which is a breakfast place. One could be an Einstein's, and one could be a-
No, there's no guarantee, just what's practical. But, the traffic counts assume that they all are open. But they're not.
Okay. And I guess also, I have a question about, if you want to go eastbound on Northlake coming from the project, you're going to come down MacArthur, correct? So, you'll leave that and come in and then try and take the light.
Depending on where you're at on the site, you know, some will go west and do a U-turn. Others who might be parked further to the back would go out the, the MacArthur Boulevard. I think it'd be a mix.
Okay. Can I just piggyback one question on the traffic? Adam, if you don't mind. When you, when you talk about your peak morning trips, Watkins, what time does school start? Is it 9:00 o'clock there?
I believe the school, the school, it's a later school.
Hold on, hold on.
And I'm not, I'm not certain what time it starts. I know it's out at 4:00.
Watkins Middle School, what, the school starts there later?
It's later because it lets out at 4:00, I know. Yeah.
The elementary schools start earlier than the middle school.
Okay, all right. I'm just wondering about, as far as the peak trips, what's the timeframe you're using for those?
The peak hour for, for traffic purposes is an hour within the 7:00 to 9:00 timeframe. So, so it does, the traffic study assumes the overlap of the school traffic that was, any school traffic that is in place between 7:00 and 9:00 that's on, on the roads. It accounts for that as well as the restaurant.
Assuming all three are restaurants.
So, it's a worst-case analysis.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you. Do we have any other questions before we move on to a staff presentation?
I have a few questions. One, and none, not in any particular order. As far as traffic, just out of curiosity, what is the timing for the Congress extension?
It's funded in 2018.
2018.
2018.
Yeah. I believe right-of-way and the right-of-way funding is maybe 2016. Don't quit me on that.
Okay. And as, from a site standpoint, I have a bunch of questions regarding the site plan. Do you want me to-
We'll wait till the end on that one.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, let's have a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Again, Don Sonnenborn, Planning and Zoning, and I have been sworn in. This is Resolution 13, 2015, for the Banyan Tree PUD. As Mr. Herring had said, the request is for a PUD amendment to develop three buildings on the Phase 2 site and a major conditional use for restaurant with drive-through. This is the overall location map. What you see in the yellow dash line is the overall PUD. This is Phase 2 within the PUD. It's across from Costco and Sports Authority with Lake Catherine Park and the Lake Catherine Residential in the north. The background, the Banyan Tree PUD was approved by ordinance 41 in 2001. And then, REZO 86, 2006 approved this Phase 2 site plan, which was a 50,000-square-foot building. It was 30,000 square feet of medical and 20,000 square feet of office. Some of the existing site details, there's two existing access points. The Northlake Boulevard is right-in, right-out only, and then, the MacArthur Boulevard is to the, to the north of the parcel. There's an existing cross-access to Phase 1, to the Blood Bank. That's going to remain. And there's an existing six-foot concrete wall along the north, and that's also going to remain. And the Blood Bank is to the west. It's a little over 40,000 square feet. It's three stories. The Banyan Tree offices are to the east, about 25,000 square feet. Those are two stories. And the bank's on the corner, and then, the vacant restaurant. The previously approved site plan, as I said, was a three-story office building with 50,000 square feet total. In the rear, where you see the dashed oval, that was dry retention. There was very minimal landscaping along that north line to buffer the residents to the north. The trips were 108 in the a.m. and 136 in the p.m. This was the elevation for the building. It had a 50-foot height and a 65-foot tower height. And staff has worked very diligently with the applicant, and I just wanted to give you some brief history of how this looked like when they first submitted the initial design. There were two drive-through restaurants in the back. They were much larger than the restriction of 1,000 square feet now. One was 2,500 square feet, and the other one was 3,400 square feet. They both had drive-throughs. The dumpster was towards the back, closer to the residential area. There was no break in the building along Northlake. And again, the dry retention was all in the back with no landscaping to buffer the residents. The overall architecture had just a little, hardly any variation in paint color. You'll see that the final one is much improved. There was a little less architectural details along the front, which you'll see with the later design. And then, there was a few hip roof features. So, the site plan, as Mr. Herring has described, it's 19,001 six square feet of restaurant, 10,200 square feet of retail, for a total of 29,216 between the three buildings. The landscape buffers, it's 25 feet on the north. 15 feet is required, so they are providing a wider, densely landscaped buffer along the north, adjacent to the residential area. 25-foot is provided on the east side. It's a 20.9 average. There is a waiver, which I'll describe further, and 20 feet on the south along Northlake Boulevard. They do have two locations for their art and public places. They have outdoor seating that's shown here in the ovals. As Mr. Herring had described, there is a new sidewalk along Northlake Boulevard that has the circular features and landscaping on both sides. And there's a slight realignment here in the northeast corner to provide for that traffic coming in, and I'll describe the traffic flow on another slide coming up. And as Mr. Herring had said, they did look at providing a little bit more of the landscape buffer at the pinch point around the tree. We did receive a revised site plan this afternoon, and staff had an opportunity to review that, review it with engineering as well, and we agree with the changes. Just continuing with the site plan, the building north is set 100 feet from the north property line, giving that buffer to the residential to the north. The drive-through is set back 76 feet from the property line. The dumpster now has been centrally located. It's not back in the rear by the residents. It's centrally located. And the existing wall will stay there. It's going to be repainted and repaired. That is a condition of approval that we have in the ordinance, I'm sorry, in the resolution. And there's a 25-foot buffer also on the north side, on the residential side. You can see the wall that's here, and you can see the existing tree canopy that is on the north side. So, staff worked with the applicant, above and beyond the drive-through lane, we worked with the applicant to create traffic flow, as Mr. Herring had described, going around the north building. This is for the cars that will be coming in through the MacArthur Boulevard. Now, the majority of the traffic will be coming in off of Northlake, and there's a slide to show that as well. But staff worked with, with the applicant to create this traffic flow that will come in. There'll be signage as people drive in there to drive straight forward for the drive-through, come around the building and up this way. They have revised the site plan since the PZAB meeting to create more of a curve here, so this is eliminated here. And there'll be a sign here, "Note Right Turn" for anybody coming this way. So, we've gone above and beyond, working with them just on the drive-through to create that internal traffic circulation around building north. And the project shall comply with all performance standards, including noise per the LDRs. For the project landscaping, you'll see that there are, there is 50 feet between the two uses. There's 25 feet on the residential side and 25 feet on this project's side along the north property line. This is the existing buffer on the Lake Catherine side. You'll see that it is pretty mature and heavily landscaped as well. And they are providing 25 feet where 15 feet is required, so they're going beyond the code. Continuing with the landscaping, they are above and beyond the required landscaping points. They're over the open space that's required, and they have a combination of ornamental trees, palm trees, annuals, and shrubs. For the signage, they have monument signs that are shown here in the ovals. The northeast corner is to be replaced. That's the existing sign that's there right now for the Blood Bank. It has no signage on it now, but the monument wall is there. The southwest corner is the approved sign for the Blood Bank, but has not been constructed. And then, the southeast corner is the new sign that they're asking for a waiver, and staff is in support of that. And that's the smaller sign Mr. Herring had described. They have principal wall signs, shown here in the blue. They're allowed one sign per code. And then, they have the ground floor tenant wall signs that are allowed per code for each tenant. And when you have double frontage, like they do here, you're allowed to have those ground floor tenant wall signs in the front and in the rear. And we do not have any signage at all in the rear of building north. And as Mr. Herring had described, they do have a waiver for slightly larger signs, ground floor signs, going from 24-inch letters to 36-inch letters. So, they're asking for six additional inches for the signage. And those are on these green signs that you see here in the front on Building West and on the end cap here on Building East. And what they're doing is, they are eliminating the principal, the larger principal tenant wall sign here as a justification for the waiver to allow a little bit of a smaller sign here. And then, they have under-canopy blade signs that are going underneath the plaza area back here to identify the tenants, once, once people have walked underneath the canopy. And that's only for Building West and East. So, they have a master signage program. They're asking for the tenants that do have the federally registered logos to allow them. But then, the others will have a standard font, and they'll have black letters that'll be backlit at night. And these are the under-canopy blade signs. For the monument signs, during the PZAB meeting, they were proposing these at 10 feet, and staff did not support that. So, they have changed that now down to the eight feet, which complies with code. The overall parking, the site does need all the parking requirements for the entire PUD. So, you see the parking numbers here. And the existing PUD architecture, it does vary slightly with architectural styles. You see the Blood Bank, which is here on Phase 1. And then, these are the offices on Phase 3, and this is the restaurant on Phase 3. The project architecture, sorry, excuse me. It creates that pedestrian scale and strong urban design that implements the Northlake Boulevard overlay zone. The height is at 35 feet. And even though it has unique architecture for this phase, they have brought in similar architectural elements that you'll see in Phase 1 and 2, such as the barrel roof tile, the tower features, and bringing the landscaping and the buildings towards the front to implement what we call the M-BOS guidelines. And some of the other areas along the corridor, some of the newer projects do have those buildings that come forward to implement the M-BOS guidelines. You can see some of these here. The McDonald's, the LA Fitness, you know, it brings a nice quality of having that, those elements coming forward to give it much more pedestrian-friendly feeling. The AT&amp;T has come up a little further, and even though CVS is not existing, it has been approved, and it got full support to bring that building close to the corner, more pedestrian scale. So, what we don't want to see is a sea of parking. This is the Kmart along Northlake Boulevard. So, the M-BOS, the Northlake Boulevard overlay zone guidelines prohibit this, and we don't want to see a sea of parking like this on the new developments. For the traffic, what was previously approved was 108 a.m. and 136 p.m. peak hour trips. The current development does meet the traffic performance standards for Palm Beach County and the city, generates 138 a.m. and 166 p.m., which is 30 additional trips from what was previously approved. And that was a 50,000-square-foot medical office building. We're going down to a little over 29,000 square feet, but with the retail and restaurant is a slight increase of 30 trips in the a.m. and the p.m. The traffic distribution, 75% are coming in off of Northlake Boulevard in that right-in, right-out, and 65% of the overall project trips are coming out. So, vast majority of the project trips are utilizing Northlake Boulevard. So, in addition to the traffic, staff is requiring a southbound right-turn lane at the northeast entry. And this is not required by concurrency. This is something that staff is utilizing. They're working with the applicant, and the applicant is working with us to add this additional turn lane for additional traffic flow from MacArthur. They're going to modify the area that's here now to create that turn lane into the MacArthur entrance. And then, they're also, the applicant is also working with staff to create a clear- And then the applicant is also working with staff to create a clear, improve the slight distance there at the MacArthur, the northbound left turn lane. For the waivers, one waiver is for that sidestep back, which Mr. Herring had described here. It is on the front corner. And this allows for the stronger pedestrian and streetscape and the urban design along North Lake Boulevard that I described. And you'll see that it does widen as it goes back here, so the 25 feet is just at the corner here. And then the other waiver is for the landscape buffer along MacArthur. They have provided a 25-foot wide buffer, 20 feet's required, but they are providing a 25-foot wide buffer. And there's a pinch point here, which we talked about earlier, and which the revised site plan we showed you, which we had an opportunity to review, is now providing 5 feet on the property. So you have an additional 2 feet off their property, you have a 5-foot sidewalk, and then you have 3 feet additional. So staff is in support of that as well, and it brings the average up to 20.9 a foot buffer. And then for the waivers, for the signs, the one ground floor monument sign is here, and that identifies what is here in phase two. Staff is in support of that one additional sign. There's five ground signs proposed or allowed for the whole PUD. This would allow for six. And then allowing the six-floor tenant wall signs at the higher letter height, 6 inches higher. Staff is in support of that. And again, those are the ones that are shown here in green. And then four additional ground floor tenant wall signs, these are for the end cap users. There's one on the building west, there's one on building east, and then there's two on building north for those end cap users, and staff is in support of that. For the major conditional use, that is restaurant with drive-through, to allow that within the PUD, it is restricted to a maximum of 1,000 square feet. It can't go above that right now. It meets Section 78-52 of the conditional uses of the LDRs. And the project does have hours of operation, it's going to be restricted from 6 a.m. to 11 p.m., so you're not going to have restaurants open all night. And other drive-throughs throughout the area are, although they're larger than the 1,000 square feet, but what they are in close proximity are McDonald's, the Arby's, Taco Bell, Poyot Tropical, and those are approximately 2,000 to about 1,800 feet on either east side, east and west of the project. The project has been noticed in the paper, the signs have been posted, mailers have been sent out. The Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board recommended approval at their November 18 meeting, 6 to 1. And staff recommends approval of Resolution 13-2015. Oh, and I do want to clarify that Watkins Middle School has a 9:15 start time and a 4:05 p.m. end time.
All right, any questions to staff on their presentation?
Yes, the back building, I guess they call it the north building? That's a total of 8,192 square feet?
Yes.
And we've restricted the restaurant space to 1,000 square feet?
A maximum of 1,000 square feet.
And it has a drive-through that goes all the way around?
Correct.
Okay. Is there going to be any, you know, the tenants back there that are retail, or is there going to be a problem with the drive-through going all the way around, blocking access to the tenants in the back?
Let me get to the site.
We're going to be directing cars all the way around the building, close to the building, correct?
All of the entries are along the front.
Okay.
There's no entries in the back. So the drive-through is in the rear and on the side, but everyone would be entering that building north from this side.
Where would the restaurant be?
The restaurant right now is 1,000 square feet, right here.
Right there, yeah, so they're being lined up here.
Yeah, okay.
Don't they have doors in the back there for exit?
They do have rear doors, but they're not, from what I understand...
They're emergency doors?
They're not open to the public.
Right.
And there's no seating in the restaurant?
Pardon me?
It's exclusively drive-through, there's no seating.
No, there's outdoor seating.
Just 1,000 square feet.
The oval areas show the outdoor seating.
The actual, the restaurant square footage being proposed as part of the north, which may or may not be utilized, is currently proposed at 1,000 square feet, which could include seating if they choose to do that. It wouldn't be a lot of seats considering the square footage, but they can have that if they choose.
And the hours of operation, are those that you mentioned, are they for just the restaurant or are they for the entire site?
They're for the entire site.
Okay.
And the deliveries, too, are the same? I do want to note that there's delivery times that are restricted to those same hours?
The 6 to 11, correct, the 6 a.m.
There's no deliveries that shall commence prior to 6 a.m. and not after 11 p.m.
Are they seven days a week?
Yes.
Any other questions, staff? Wait till the end, okay. Let's go and get to the comic cards, we have a lot, so thank you. We'll make copies and put this in the public record.
My name's Louis Satriano. I live in Lake Catherine Development. I'm here tonight to talk to council...
You've been sworn in, Lou, I'm sorry. You've been sworn in?
I was sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
Came here tonight to talk to council, to give consideration. Number one, do not change the name of the Banyan Tree PUD to North Lake Gardens. Number two, reject the waivers that change the setback from the city land development regulation requirements. Also maintain character and local area per the NBOZ, that's the North Lake Boulevard overlay zone. Deny approval of the major conditional restaurant with drive-through within the PUD. And there's a lot of reasons why. The drive-through will have announcement for orders, that means loudspeaker, very close to Sun Terrace Building. There's four buildings there, if you notice, and there's Sun Terrace Patio Home. There's four units for each building, that's 16 homes, 16 units. Traffic, we all know the problem with traffic today, and I'll get to that later, but also it's a concern, how they exit onto MacArthur Boulevard. And also, I'll go on for, the next thing is lighting. We didn't address lighting at all. The lights are going to be on, and it opens at 6 a.m. in the morning, and it closes 11 o'clock at night. These people live there, and these bright lights are going to be on. Refuse approval of the reduced parking space size to obtain additional parking spaces. Give consideration for safety of the children and the pedestrians due to the close proximity of Howard Watkins Middle School. Address traffic concerns on MacArthur Boulevard. Any revisions or delay in the traffic flow of MacArthur Boulevard will make existing problem even worse. It should be noted that cars and trucks cut through using MacArthur Boulevard instead of going north on A1A. Instead of them going over the tracks and making a left and go north on A1A, they cut through. And we see plenty of that, and I understand it was only supposed to be for local traffic. But there used to be a sign up that said, "No trucks except delivery," but I don't see that anymore. School time traffic, parents travel to and from Howard Watkins School, and the school bus traffic makes MacArthur Boulevard a difficult road to drive on. It should be noted, MacArthur Boulevard has only one lane going north and one lane going south. My three minutes are up?
Go ahead, Lou, you can finish.
If you will check all drive-through restaurants along North Lake Boulevard, you will notice better traffic flow than this restaurant coming in off MacArthur. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll put this in the record. I have a lot of ewings, I'm going to start with, I guess, Norma.
Jim.
Oh, Jim. I got James, Norma, Jim, Norma. I got a lot of them.
Just wanted to check to see if the city clerk had distributed the packets to the various council members.
They've been placed into the record, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Ewing. I live at 1039 Bedford Avenue.
You've been sworn in, sir?
Yes, I have.
Thank you very much.
For the record, a petition against the Banyan Tree PUD Phase Two project has been submitted tonight, listing various issues and concerns with this development project. Comments and statements will now be addressed from several residents and neighbors. 182 resident signatures have been obtained for the petition, with 90 additional letters to city council were all collected during the last two weeks. My comment for the project is, will begin. The original resolution granting phase two approval for a four-story medical and professional office building, which would have had a smaller footprint with no evening or weekend activity, why amend the PUD to allow phase two to be developed with three separate single-story buildings, all of which will be higher-traffic restaurant uses with a small amount of retail? Currently, restaurant with a drive-through is not listed as a permitted use for this parcel and the PUD. While a drive-through may be consistent with surrounding uses along the North Lake Boulevard corridor, you have to ask if this is appropriate and fitting for this site and entrance to the city. Looking into the future, if the list of amended uses, excuse me, if the list of amended usage is approved to include restaurant with a drive-through, what will prevent other drive-through restaurants from being approved in the PUD? For example, in Banyan Place where the current La Grange Restaurant building is located. If approved, we believe there will be nothing but more problems with congestion and traffic reducing pedestrian and children's safety, and would undermine the historic character of the area. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Norma, did you want to speak as well, please?
My name is Norma Ewing. I also live at 1039 Bedford Avenue in Lake Catherine Community.
Have you been sworn in as well?
Yes, I have.
Thank you.
As per staff reports, activity for the site is noted as mostly at nights and on weekends. Not exactly what a Lake Catherine residential community would prefer. The proposed hours of operation are a concern. While the condition of approval restricts restaurants from no earlier than 6 and no later than 11, it should be noted employee arrivals and departures would probably be prior to this and after 11. Noise, bright lights, smells, and trash deposit and collection would exist outside of the hours of operation. Yes, the applicant is proposing to stagger the types of restaurant use for the site. However, this does not mean that they will hold to that schedule. There is a concern, the city will not be able to control the hours of operation when one tenant fails and a new one occupies the space. In addition, while I have your attention, regarding the 20-foot landscape buffer, now I understand there's been a change in that since we got the information, but the developer is requesting a waiver which will reduce the buffer at the widest point around the Banyan Tree. Reducing landscaping area to almost zero due to the parking for the site, which has been pushed up right against this area and much closer to MacArthur Boulevard. Instead of adhering to minimum landscape buffer of 20 feet and reducing parking, it is understood a section of the sidewalk is proposed to be moved to handle the setback, providing for what is believed to be a 2-foot buffer. If approved, this will decrease the setback at the pinch point around the tree and may jeopardize pedestrian safety on the sidewalk. You know there are school kids walking on that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wayne Dawson?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Wayne Dawson, I live in Lake Catherine subdivision, just like the rest of the people here in the bank. I'd like to break a little bit of the monotone here and congratulate the man for the presentation. If he was a car salesman, I believe I'd buy 10 of them, and believe me, I would.
You've been sworn in, sir? You've been sworn in? You've been sworn in?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you.
It's prepared. Mister Silverwing, if you would.
Take your time.
Were the current plans being proposed, three restaurants, one with a drive-through plus retail shops, how's it going to benefit Lake Catherine and the surrounding neighborhood? Our overall impression is you're trying to squeeze too much development into such a small space, relying on waivers to accommodate the proposed usage for the site. Without the waivers, it appears that the pieces just may not work. Perhaps the buildings and landscape proposals would somewhat near Banyan Place on the opposite side of MacArthur and honor the 165-foot building setback around the Banyan Tree as well as to adhere to the 40-foot wide, 40-foot side corner, side, excuse me, and the 20-foot east-side landscape buffer. This may be acceptable. As the gateway and the entrance to the city of Palm Beach Gardens, coupled with the historic Banyan Tree that John D. MacArthur, the founder of the city, is so famous for, does the city really believe building more retail and restaurants is the image to portray in this location? Clearly, the plans may have an adverse effect on traffic in the local area and the neighborhood as written. My biggest concern, or one of my concerns, is, I went over this afternoon looking at the site. The amount of water retention area over there, I guess is supposedly kind of an overflow for the blood bank over there. So we're going to be turning, adding, excuse me, we're going to be adding more runoff to that same area. Retention pond, as I've been reading through some of the notes, that it looks like they're going to fill in that retention pond, and they need to use exfiltration drainage or something like that. Also, the concern is Lake Catherine, that whole area over there is all on a lift station, which is also located right there at Lake Catherine. Is that thing going to be acceptable to handle the additional load off this new development make in there? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. Next up, Dane. I don't want to butcher your last name, sorry. You've got beautiful handwriting, though.
Lightner.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Dane Lightner, I live at 1083 for the record, and I am a homeowner in the association. I also am the president of the association, Bedford Lake Catherine, and I have been sworn in.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to draw your attention first and foremost to this beautiful picture behind you all, and reflect on that picture for a minute. That picture is two magnificent Banyan Trees, which in 1961, John MacArthur envisioned as the entrance of Palm Beach Gardens. He didn't envision a drive-through there, I can guarantee you that. Next door is office buildings, and the blood bank is office buildings, and for the years past, this project has been designated as office buildings. It wasn't until recently, in the past couple of years, that they've requested there be a drive-through for restaurants and retail. I take objection to the traffic studies that were done because I do not agree with the numbers on the a.m. trips or the p.m. trips, especially given that they're proposing Chipotle. I'm not sure if you have ever been to a Chipotle, but they have more than 130 people on a day, especially given the fact that PDQ came to our association trying to get into the complex next door, and said they have an average amount of trips of people of 1,000 per day. 1,000 additional people per day coming through MacArthur and North Lake going into this association. The traffic has a horrible solution as far as attempting to make a U-turn on North Lake Boulevard to get into the complex. Right now, there are two designated... Right now, there are two designated lanes to get into it, one which would be accessible for a U-turn. So, you're forcing the residents over on Lighthouse Drive, as well as in Lake Catherine, to sit through two, maybe three, maybe four lights just to get into their own community. Meanwhile, you have excess traffic going through. The engineers mentioned the Okeechobee Plaza. I want to bring your attention to the Starbucks that is in that plaza. If you go there in the morning, as I have on occasion, they have cars that are lined out the street onto Okeechobee Boulevard because they are going around in a circus fashion, just as proposed here, for the traffic pattern of the drive-thru going around the complete building. And as the city, as the council member David Levy mentioned, the circular traffic pattern is a problem because if you're gonna have retail that's also there, it's gonna be dangerous for the residents of our community to be walking through that traffic just to get into the stores. Lastly, I would just like to note that the times for the proposed hours of operation are unacceptable at this time due to the traffic of not only the school system for walk-ins, but also the elementary school that sits further back that opens earlier. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. George Hagerty?
Hi, my name is George Hagerty. I reside at 1033 Bedford Avenue in Palm Beach Gardens.
Been sworn in.
Been sworn in.
Thank you.
Right now, at this time, I am not comfortable with the proposed project the way it is presented and would like to share the following. With respect to the Northlake Boulevard overlay zone and the forty-foot slide side-corner setback, if the ordinance says forty, I believe it should be forty feet, not twenty-five feet. Previous city administrations have established setback codes to maintain the integrity of the city as envisioned. Aren't the waivers really to accommodate placement of buildings east and placement of building east done to meet parking requirements for the site? Looking at the proposed plan, it appears the northeast section of building east may encroach on MacArthur Boulevard overlay zone and the one hundred and sixty-five-foot building setback requirement around the Banyan Tree. At this time, I don't feel this has been addressed. One other thing I'd like to bring up is no one has mentioned that the school has a no right turn coming off of MacArthur. Between eight and nine-thirty, you're not allowed to make a right turn on MacArthur onto Northlake. And then, between the hours of two-thirty and four o'clock, you are not allowed to make right turns onto Northlake from MacArthur. And I want to know how this would affect the U-turns that people are gonna make in sync with people not being able to make right turns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Julia Jackson?
Hello, my name's Julia Jackson, and I live at 1029 Bedford Avenue, and I've been sworn in.
Thank you.
I'm very concerned about the drive-thru restaurant that's currently not permitted in that PUD. Because there is no guarantee to what type of building or what type of restaurant or use that's gonna be, it's gonna create a major problem with traffic. It's already very, very difficult to get out of the community in the morning at peak hours, and it's extremely difficult getting in the, getting back home in the afternoon. And it's, to have that additional traffic with those, with that drive-thru community or the drive-thru restaurant is going to be horrific. Right now, getting through there, and La Grange, La Grange, the restaurant there, opening up over there, and so there is gonna be a whole 'nother group of people trying to get in and out of that and going through that area. Also, I would like to really, I think what Dane said about the tree is really important. That's the gateway to Palm Beach Gardens, and I'm proud to live in Palm Beach Gardens. And I would just hate to see something overshadow what we've got going on right now in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Henry Pacoli?
Good evening. Henry Pacoli, 1012 Bedford Avenue, Palm Beach Gardens.
And you've been sworn in, sir?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to discuss the request to revise the conditions of approval and resolution 1025, 2012, removing the condition number two entirely. I think it should be noted that there is a concern that the point of safe and effective means of vehicular ingress and egress at the north access point of the subject site will be exposed and should a left turn from the site be allowed. As a result of the daily snaws of traffic and vehicular stacked up on the roadway, waiting for the light to change at Northlake, allowing a turn from the north access point on MacArthur may further create circulation problems in the immediate area. And additionally, introduction of a southbound right-turn lane that is proposed for better access to the site may also encourage drivers to use this entrance as a cut-through and a way to avoid waiting four to five light changes at MacArthur and Northlake. Monitoring of the traffic may need to be done to address this situation. Therefore, I think an analysis of this exit from the site to MacArthur as a right-out only should be included in the study, especially when the opening of La Grange comes in effect. What's more, providing a southbound right-turn lane at the north end of the subject site may bring vehicles and noise closer to the residence of Sun Terrace. And secondly, concerning all the waivers for the signs, I'd like to know how can a termination be made on the signs, their colors, size of lettering, and amount of, when it's not clear how many tenants will be there and who will occupy the space? I'm in favor of the city keeping with its codes and reducing the monument sign, A, which I, it's not up here, but, you know, MacArthur Boulevard entrance. However, placement of sign B at the south corner doesn't, does raise a concern for visual conflict with all the big and unattractive utility boxes there on the corner. And, I mean, it's just very congested there, and I don't know what they're gonna do with all of that, but if they're gonna put a monument sign there, then I guess those boxes will remove. But how do you move the utility boxes to accommodate a sign? There's quite a few of them. I guess it's telephone and electric and whatnot, but, and that's my concerns with this.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Linda Darling?
Good evening. My name's Linda Darling. I have been sworn in, and I reside at 1079 Bedford Avenue in Lake Catherine.
Thank you.
I'm against the proposed project the way it is presented at this time, and I would like to share the following with the council. As residents of the community and living close to the Howlow Watkins Middle School, we do have a safety concern with the students at the school, as well as for pedestrians in the area. While the proposed development is a few blocks away from the school, it does pose a threat to the safety of the students walking to and from school along MacArthur Boulevard. Being a thirty-five-year veteran of the school district and having worked as a teacher and administrator at five different elementary, middle, and high schools in the county, including seven years at Howlow Watkins, I can say without question that kids do not use crosswalks and crossing guards. They cross the street as, at will whenever they get the urge, such as if they decided on a whim to go to a fast-food restaurant for a snack before or after school. They'll be darting out between the cars to get to their destination. They'll be talking with their friends. They'll be looking at their phones and not paying attention to the parent drivers who just dropped off their own children and are in a hurry to get to work, but have to wait four to five traffic light changes to get out of MacArthur Boulevard. I've never been at a school where students, or parents for that matter, went out of their way to utilize the crosswalks and crossing guards that were put in place. And what happens when the kids are fooling around and chasing each other on the sidewalk at the pinch point by the Banyan Tree where the buffer's been reduced from twenty to, now it's seven feet, but it was two feet? They'll be running toward and into the street on MacArthur, and even with the sidewalk being so close to the Northlake Boulevard right turn off the roadway, there's no room for kids to make playful mistakes. In a presentation by the developer at Lake Catherine in November, I posed this concern, and the developer's representative responded that they would have the school district provide crossing guards. And the truth is, however, that the sheriff's department... The crossing guards are allocated through the sheriff's department budget. And I've experienced elementary schools in extreme need of crossing guards that could not be provided to them. So, just to close, I feel that this is a recipe putting the safety of Howlow Watkins Middle School students in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the last one on the list, number twelve. Is it Phim or Fam, or I can't? Yes, I'm sorry. Is that Pam, really? Wow. You guys all have beautiful handwriting back there. You really do, but I can't read it. Beautiful.
My name is Pam Pacoli Hagerty. I reside at 1033 Bedford Avenue, and yes, I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
Counsel, Mr. Dizell, Mr. Herring, and staff, as you've all heard tonight, several residents in the Lake Catherine community and neighbors have expressed various concerns regarding the proposed Banyan Tree development project. For the record, and as already noted, Mr. Dizell and Mr. Herring and others from Cutler and Herring did meet with the Lake Catherine community on two separate occasions last year. Once in April for presentation of the plans for the site, and again in November, just prior to the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board meeting. Everyone in attendance at the meetings was appreciative of the presentations and the time to talk over the project together, as well as to express concerns where warranted. Only one needs to live a day in the life of the residents to fully understand the problems with traffic and circulation in the local area. Add in the intensity of not one, but three proposed restaurants, a drive-thru, plus retail shops, and the noted issues will be much worse. No, we are not experts or planners, but these observations come to you firsthand from the residents who experience everyday comings and goings of the area. Pictures are worth a thousand words as presented to you tonight. Yes, we all want something nice at this location. And the project still has merit. The quality, architecture, and landscaping are not the issues here. It's the intensity of the proposed plan and all the waivers asked for to enable this plan to work. Traffic presents another problem and needs to be realistically dealt with. Traffic present, I'm sorry, engineers need to figure out what else can be done besides what is being proposed. A more intense development means more cars on the road. Please consider our genuine comments tonight, as well as all work as we, as we all want to work together and make this project the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Hold on, Mr. Herring, I have one more. I have Mayor Mike Martino. I know you've written some comments, Mike. Did you just want those in the record, or did you want to comment? Okay, please. As long as you've been sworn in. I don't trust former mayors, or current ones even at that, to be truthful.
Mr. Mayor, I've been sworn in.
Thank you. The mic, please. Stop the clock, please.
Okay, I'm on it.
Thank you.
The residence that I live at for the past fifty years is addressed as 320 Balsam Street, Palm Beach Gardens. I'm a neighbor of the Lake Catherine folks that are here. I was gonna make a different set of comments, but everything that I have concerns about has already been presented in a much better fashion than I could have done tonight. My compliments to all of you. Common sense and good presentation by the public has been put forth to the City Council tonight to combat a very nicely-presented, marketable project. I think you should listen tonight to the public more than you should to the presenters. The issues that they brought to you are real. They're not imaginative. I've lived there for fifty years, and I can tell you that what is being proposed will not make a good neighbor for all of the various reasons that you've heard. My concerns are the same. I came here tonight to listen again, to see if I could have a mind change, and I have not. I attended the Planning, Zoning Board meeting and listened that evening. I read the executive summary report, and I've listened very intently tonight, and I simply have to conclude that this project deserves a denial vote this evening for all of the reasons that were presented. Both, most of them can apply in a legal fashion to your vote. So, you shouldn't have to worry too much about that. The crux of the issue is if you guys, as a City Council, want to amend something that you've already approved and you want to give a major conditional use to something that doesn't exist. And my answer, if I was voting on this particular project in this particular neighborhood on this particular night, would be no, and I would implore you to give that consideration. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming. We usually don't allow clapping, but I understand the issues tonight and the severity of decision that could be made, so please be respectful to the process now as Mr. Herring comes up, and he's gonna address, I hope you wrote down, a lot of these issues we want to talk about now, the comments of some of the residents.
I did, and I appreciate you taking the time. And I am so sorry that somehow fear has been generated in the minds of so many residents. And certainly, as you know, you have a very detailed and thorough review process. This project has not been sitting in your community development staff's review for six months. It's been there a long, long time. Been thorough review. We've made a lot of changes. And your staff, and our engineer, and your consulting engineers have evaluated this, and they've determined that A, we meet the land development regulations, B, we meet the traffic performance standards, C, under the scrutiny of the noise that's been raised by the residents, perhaps fueled by the media, I don't know. They have gone out and double-checked the traffic and triple-tracked it. Where our traffic engineers have gone, gone back out again and have evaluated the traffic that's there. Now, the uses that we are proposing... Now, the uses that we are proposing are uses that are permitted under the zoning that exists on the property. We're not asking...we're asking for restaurant uses, we're asking for retail uses, we think they're appropriate. I will challenge anyone to tell me that we're overbuilding on the site at a .17 FAR. I think we're being very conscious of the neighbors in the way that we have put together the plan, and this is one of the few plans where developers actually come up and wanted to respect the Northlake Boulevard overlay zone and bring their buildings all the way to the street. Many have been asked, I've represented a number of those clients, who've been asked to bring their buildings forward, and they haven't, and Mr. Dizell has done exactly that. So please understand that we are making a change to the planned unit development that is here within this mixed-use zoning district. It's my opinion that the mixture in uses makes this particular mixed-use development more compatible and more consistent with your code, and we have a right to make a change, and we have a right to make a change and have that review done in accordance with your land development regulations that are here. We just can't say, "Well, they're making a change, and I don't like that change." You have to make that change based on the criteria defined by your code and that your staff is recommending approval for. But we've evaluated the issues, and let me just quickly run through a few of them. It's been a long night, so I'm not going to go on, you hear enough of me, but there's a question about noise from the drive-through. That's easily addressed, you have performance standards dealing with that. This is not McDonald's, it's 1,000 square feet on the extreme west end of that northern building that's there.
Hope, hope, thank you.
Hours of operation, we propose to limit the hours of operation. There's nothing within your zoning code that suggests that we're required to. We're entitled to 24-hour services if we would like that. We've agreed to limit that, we think that we've come up with a fair limit. Are all the businesses going to be open till 11 o'clock at night? I don't think so. Go to the corner of Northlake Boulevard and Military Trail, there's lots of restaurants in there, there's other shops. Are all those businesses open till 11 o'clock at night? No, they're not. How many of them open up at 6 o'clock? Maybe one or two of them. The same thing's going to happen here. This is not...this is a neighborhood center of about 29,000 square feet. It doesn't have an anchor, it's got a different dynamic than what you have even in your general commercial larger centers. Trash deposits, we've moved our dumpster as far away as we can from the residential area. We've committed to use a trash compactor. Trash compactors are known, and they're good, because they don't create noise and smells. You take the entire unit, it goes totally off-site, gets dumped, and gets brought back. You don't even have the clanking and the noise of your typical service that would come in with dumpsters and crashing them over the tops of their trucks, because it doesn't create noise. That's why we did that. We did that in response to a number of the meetings that actually we had with the residents. There was a question about, well, there's too much, just too much development, and I know that's a common theme that sometimes we hear today. The reality is that this is not. This is not too much development. It's a .17 FAR, less than 10,000 square feet per acre, substantially less than the 50,000 square feet of office that would have been on that site. 30,000 square feet of that of being medical office. You know what kind of traffic medical office generates. Some of you understand that. In my opinion, in terms of conflicts with AM and PM peak hour traffic, far more with that use. Yes, we had to evaluate all our restaurants as if all of them were opened at one time. That's not what's going to really happen, that's not reality, but that's what we did, that's the worst-case scenario. MacArthur Boulevard didn't contemplate these types of uses. I would disagree. This is...these types of uses are very much so appropriate. They will serve the residential in that neighborhood area. If there was 50,000 square feet of office there, everybody's coming from I-95 to go to their employment base. In this particular case, we're actually going to provide uses that are going to serve the area, and as Mr. Kerr pointed out, the majority of the traffic is captured traffic, about 50% on the road. There's questions about the circulation around the drive-through. If you look at that drive-through, we've got a tremendous amount of stacking. There's no issue with conflicts with patrons going into the stores. We just suggested that the circulation to get there goes around the front. It functions very well. Your traffic, your city engineer's evaluated it, your traffic engineer's evaluated, our traffic engineer's evaluated, and I obviously was involved in the planning of that. The setback, setback waiver, a lot of issue about waivers. The city code, the way that it was established, was designed to promote innovative and creative thinking, and it basically is a waiver-based code. That's the way it has been set up in the planned development district to encourage developers to bring forth projects that are above the bar. This project is above the bar. We've been...we're engaging the street, and the waivers that we've requested are appropriate. There's one major conditional use that we've asked for, for a 1,000-square-foot drive-through restaurant. Not a 5,000-square-foot McDonald's, not a 3,000-square-foot McDonald's, not a major chain, something much smaller. Your staff has determined, as well as we have determined, that we meet every one of the conditional use criteria established by your code. That's what we're charged to do. If we meet the criteria established by the code, then there's an obligation where you're compelled to evaluate and accept that request. There was a comment about no turn lanes or no right turns when, at certain times on Northlake Boulevard. Please understand that's no right turns on red during those time periods. You can make right turn lanes on MacArthur Boulevard, it's no right turns on red, just so that that record is set straight. There was comments that, to me, make absolutely no sense from a planning perspective would be not allowing full access at that access point on MacArthur Boulevard, the northern access point on MacArthur Boulevard. Mr. Kerr pointed out to you that our traffic generation would be, what, two cars per minute during the peak hour going in that entrance, which is relatively, you know, one car every 30 seconds? But that access point is what's going to serve the residential neighborhood. Does it make sense to close off that access point or allow somebody just to come in and not to be able to go out and get back to the neighborhood? Would they have to go all the way back around? It doesn't make sense. Planning says that we should create connectivity and maintain it. Of course, we want to do it in a safe way, and I think that there's measures that have been put into these conditions of approval that require and obligate us to agree to a condition that's a little bit loosey-goosey, that says, "We'll agree to some traffic study, and if there's a problem, we have to fix it." You know, I think we have been very receptive in trying to address the concerns that have identified. There's comments out there suggesting that you wait four or five lights at MacArthur Boulevard. Our traffic engineers haven't defined that. I don't think your traffic engineers have defined that either. So a little bit of conjecture was added in, and I just, you know, I certainly appreciate what the residents have to say, but I think that there's a lot that's there. This is truly a very good project on a very difficult corridor in terms of trying to make retailing successful. We think we have the right formula, and we don't think that we've asked for too much at all from this council, nor do I believe...I believe that your staff has also believed that this project is good. There's just a lot of fear. When I brought Lake Catherine through 20 years ago, or however many years ago, we had the same outcry from the residential neighborhood about Lake Catherine and the fact that we had homes funding on the Earmen Walk River. We packed the old hill, the old hill, stadium on the hill. None of those fears panned out. It turned out to be a wonderful community, and this is just the completion of that. It's been sitting there vacant for a long time, and I know that, but we have the entitled...we have the right to develop it, and we would request your approval, and certainly would be willing to answer any of your concerns.
Can you...there's a couple of comments. Can you talk about lighting on the property? Is it directional lighting, no spill lighting?
Absolutely. We're required...we've actually submitted a very detailed photometric plan. We're required to maintain 100% of our light on our site. Your staff has determined that we have met that criteria.
And also, what about drainage on the back? There was a comment about that.
Drainage, well, obviously, the drainage ties into the master drainage system that's there. We are utilizing exfiltration, as the one gentleman mentioned, for our means of achieving our required water quality standards. Legal positive outfall provides to the site, and your staff has reviewed both of our engineering calculations and our preliminary engineering design, and have confirmed that they're appropriate.
Is there any questions for Mr. Herring?
One quick thing.
Turn it on.
When can't you make the right turn?
It's during school hours, right?
It's...I... Let me ask...
The gentleman did say it, but I don't remember the exact numbers.
I believe the right turn prohibition is in the morning hours. There's a no right turn on red.
At what time?
I believe it's like 8:00 to 9:30.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
In the morning, and then the rest of the day, the right turn on red is allowed.
There was also a time in the afternoon.
There's an afternoon. There's an afternoon and a morning's got time. Okay, okay.
I can tell you what it is, it's light, yes. Yeah, while you're up there, Adam.
Roughly half in the morning.
You know, the reason why I ask that, because that's the time it's easier to make that U-turn. You know, when you're going east on Northlake Boulevard, if there's nobody coming out of MacArthur, it's a lot easier to make the turnaround, it's a lot easier to flip. And in the morning...
There's no...
What he's saying is that there's a school, the kids are crossing, the reason why they don't allow it...
There's no right on red. Turn in an hour. Okay.
Okay, okay, all right.
It's our turn now to talk.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Marcy, have questions?
Yeah, I have. Adam, when calculating the traffic coming out of a drive-through, do you use the square footage of the building itself, or do you just use the fact that it's a drive-through?
For the drive-through, it's the square footage of the building, the use, that is the drive-through restaurant.
So on that, if you had an 8,000-square-foot McDonald's, it would have eight times the traffic as a 1,000-square-foot Starbucks, according to the numbers.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Don, you said you had plenty of stacking. I don't...I can't get comfortable with that drive-through in the middle of that whole parking lot. I mean, normally, when I see drive-throughs, they're going around buildings, around the back or whatever, that thing is just in the middle. I mean, how many cars...to me, those cars are going to just wrap around that building.
Well, you know, if we were a McDonald's, or even a Starbucks, because Starbucks...
I don't know, even a Starbucks, a Starbucks...
That's it. Starbucks isn't going to go back here. I mean, you know from a practicality of retailing that we're going to be able to attract the user because we have the drive-through, but it's going to be a one-off because it's located so far back.
Answer my question, is this single lane all the way around the building?
This is a single lane, but look at the amount of stacking. It goes all the way around the back of the building and all the way around the side right here. So we have substantially more than was required by virtually...
What is the length and how many cars can fit into that stacking area?
I would venture to say 14 or 15 cars.
Well, what's the length of the building itself?
Well, this building is about 80 feet deep, from top of the building to the top of the building, and it's probably...
And then what about the other side?
Three times that, it's three times that length, so it's 200 and...
270 is the length of the total queue, which includes the north side and the west side of the building.
The west side around 12.
Not including the whole circulation. I do want to make a point that those who are leaving the drive-through right on that one point, Don, can you show the cursor where the drive-through actually ends the lane? They do have a choice of going in multiple directions. If they choose to go eastbound, they can go, they can circulate, but they may also choose to egress out through the Northlake entrance. Therefore, you may...you won't have all the cars going all the way around. You may have cars...
But once they leave, though, they're fine, because they're not going to be leaving one after another.
Right. Once you leave, then you have multiple points to go to different exits.
I'm worried about the leaving, I'm worried about the stacking and line...
Right, so the stacking is 270 feet total, and the code requires 100, so the stacking well surpasses the code's requirement for the drive-through.
Do you have questions, petitioner, as well?
I have several questions, but go ahead.
Okay, there?
Well, a couple, but the one I'm concerned about is a cut-through. Some gentleman mentioned the cut-through. I know that people do use, used to use the cut...this property as a cut-through to avoid the light at MacArthur Boulevard. I know code enforcement, I know our police department has issued many tickets for people who go through there, because that's illegal. Will there be enforcement for something like that in this particular situation? In other words, will there be a sign that says, "No, no through traffic," or something like that, so that they can be ticketed, should they use this as a cut-through to go through the Northlake, eliminating that light?
Right, so in the event of somebody wanting to go westbound, and so one would use the right turn into the project and then make a quick right out, there is an existing condition of approval that addresses that very situation, onsite circulations. It's condition number 30 in the development order, which requires city staff, for the applicant, to provide any means of traffic mitigation, whether it be signage or actual improvements, traffic calming within the project or within the MacArthur Boulevard, which would prohibit that. In addition, the, of course, the city's code enforcement and the police department can monitor, as they do throughout the city, to ensure that cut-through doesn't happen. So there are measures in which we can provide if we do see that. The condition of approval was crafted in that way, so if we see things like that, that can be addressed.
Okay, because it's a matter of enforcement that really works out.
Enforcement and monitoring, yes, correct.
Okay, 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 enough, please, please. I've been kind enough all night. We're trying to let the petitioner address some of the issues. We're going to ask some questions, let him address our issues, okay? So let's hold off right now, and let's get through the dialogue, if you don't mind, please. Thank you.
Yeah, these are some things that you brought up and I've written down, so, you know, if we can just hold off so that we can ask the questions rather than everybody jumping in, okay? Understand that.
Thank you. Marcy, go ahead.
Can you please, with your cursor... Sorry, my mic wasn't on. Could you please, with your cursor, point out the drive-through speaker location on the site plan, please?
I can tell you that that hasn't been clearly defined, but we would anticipate it being somewhere right here in the back, somewhere in the back of the building, right here. Before you make the turn, you basically, you typically want to do that before you have an escape lane out, so that's where we would anticipate it being, which would...again, that's...
So that they can order and then escape?
No, not if...well, typically, that's where it would be. They can't escape if they want to.
I thought you had the escape and then the speaker itself.
Well, yeah, I would anticipate it'd be back on the north face here, and again, that's about 100 feet away from where the residents are, across a very, very thick buffer. You've got very, very specific performance standards in your code to address that. It's been a long time since, in new technologies of drive-throughs, where I've heard of a complaint from a drive-through speaker.
Where exactly is the window itself for the pickup window?
The window's right about here where my cursor is to maximize stacking.
Do we have any requirements as to how many spaces there needs to be from the actual window to the speaker? Or is that more something, a design that the actual tenant would require?
Generally, you know, what we find is it's the tenant, there's nothing in the city code that I'm aware of, but there's about a five-car length at that particular point. And again, for this type of a restaurant located in this location, I mean, it would be phenomenal if it was that busy that that drive-through was stacked through, but it's not going to be. It's not...it's a smaller space.
Clarify the hours of operation. That, I know the actual hours that you had mentioned, 6:00 to 11:00, and that, I just want to clarify, that is when the business is open to the public, correct? Not when the employees can go in and start working? So in other words, the 6 o'clock is when it's open to the actual public, correct? Or is it when the business is open in general, for employees and everything else?
The condition of approval currently has the hours of operation in terms of use, and so the establishment is...would not be allowed to be open prior to 6:00 a.m. and not after 11:00 p.m., and then those same hours are mirrored with deliveries.
So use meaning open for... So use meaning open for business, or use meaning open at all?
It would, it, as a general rule in zoning terms, it would be open for business. Understand, though, I, I don't know how many businesses, even in Palmage Gardens, are open at six AM, there just aren't that many. If, if there's one or two within the center, that's a lot.
Why would you have those area, why would you have, why would you have those hours of operation if you don't think realistically they're gonna be open?
Because, because you need to be able to, Joe pointed out, this is a, I mean, retailing today is very difficult. We want, we'd like to have an operation like a first watch, that'd be a great, or like the Boulevard. I mean, you go over to-
What time is Boulevard open?
Probably six o'clock, I don't know, maybe before that.
I actually looked at some of the hours of operation on my phone, it's in Starbucks and other Panera Bread, they're all different, but Starbucks and those types of restaurants are open at five thirty in the morning. Some of the restaurants, Panera and others, are open at six, and some are open at five thirty.
Yeah, so it, it only, I mean, if we needed to limit the square footage, you know, I, I wouldn't wanna do that, because I like to keep it open, but, you know, we could say a third of the square footage couldn't be, you know, you know, would fall within that morning hour, but reality is, we'd like market forces to address it. If we have, if we have one or two, that's gonna be a lot, in my opinion.
I think that's, I still have a few more.
But a first watch or something like that would be perfect here.
I'm sorry?
That use would be perfect here.
I've never heard of that.
Breakfast place, or something.
Waffle House.
No, not, not Waffle House.
Okay. Where, someone was referring to a restaurant that was called La Grangea, or something like that? Where exactly is that?
I, I believe it was the old Quarter Deck.
Oh, okay. Okay. The signage in conjunction with the utility boxes, that was a comment, can you please walk me through, there is a lot of utility boxes when I drove that site, so where exa- now, I saw your little square for your monument sign pop on there, but-
The, the sign is located right here, which is actually back from the utility boxes. Most of those utility boxes are located out in the intersection, they're also operating part of the signalization for the lights, and as a part of, staff had asked us to look at that, and we're providing landscaping around all of those utility boxes, it's difficult to see at this particular scale, but that's something we had committed to when we reviewed with them, so, so actually, the signage is, is set back from those, so we don't think that there'll be a conflict.
Have you, or have we received any letters from the school board regarding this property? Or this petition, I should say?
None.
Okay. What is the permitted FAR for this zoning district?
Well, it's, it's mixed-use, so in most of our mixed-use districts, we look at point four zero, but it could be higher, is this?
So the mixed, the, the lot coverage has already been established by the PUD, and FARs are not the currency in which determines the allowable, so what we actually use is lot coverage.
Okay.
So in, in this case, the maximum lot coverage required is thirty-five percent, and seventeen has been provided. And then the other measure in that is height, and of course, they are consistent with the height.
Right. I understand.
The height is, the maximum height approved for the PUD was fifty-five feet, and then what they're providing here is thirty-five, which is measured at the towers.
It's my understanding that it was three stories, now it's one?
Yes, the previous, the previous approved office building was three, was a three-story medical office building.
Okay. That's two pages, I have more.
No, go ahead.
I apologize, but I wanna be very clear when I go through this property. Could you please walk me through the landscaping on MacArthur Boulevard and the pinch-point area? When I had an opportunity to, to review my backup material, when I zoomed in on the plant material and the hexes for the, you know, the call letters for the species themselves, it was very blurry. Usually, I like to look at this in great detail, I did not have an opportunity to do that.
Well, it's, it's actually a fantastic landscape plan, it's, I designed it myself, so, hold on here.
Some of the concerns, and I'll just, I'll kinda pin you down, the MacArthur Boulevard buffer, there's a, is there a berm?
Yes, there is.
It looked like there was a berm on the one side, and then it goes down to the pinch-point, and I want a little clarification where the two-foot turned into seven-foot, because that is my, one of my other concerns regarding the waiver, so I'd like some clarification on that. I know you have a section, you can use the section as a graphic.
Oops, that's not where I'm going. Sorry, here. Give me just a second here, and I'll, I wanna pull up this exhibit that we added here late in the day. I'm, I'm gonna use this exhibit, and then I, I can hand you the detailed landscape plans for, this does not include the area where we're adding the additional landscape.
Are you gonna test my old eyes?
I, I-
I know, but it's so tiny.
As you can, as you can see in, in the landscape plans that you have there-
You have a shot?
No, I just have just a landscape plan from the staff report.
It's the same.
Same, yeah, yeah. As you can see, that there is a berm to conceal the parking, that's located north of the, the bend in the road, and in there, in the planting, it includes a fairly thick, solid landscape scheme, which includes Japanese blueberries, Sylvester's, or Bismarck palms, several ligustrum trees, and a lot of very, very high-quality plant material. I would anticipate, in the pinch-point now, we previously had two feet, now we have seven feet, and we'd likely come in there with, again, some more Japanese blueberries, probably a little bit more clear-trunked, with potocarpus and other landscaping, so we could create a layered look, separated from the existing sidewalk that's there.
What is the height of the berm?
The height of the berm, as it's shown right now, is about three and a half to four feet.
Okay, and now, can you please walk me through the pinch-point area? From the edge of pavement, you have a strip of landscape in the sidewalk, and then an actual-
Right, from, from the edge of pavement, there is a, there is a strip which is about three feet. We were previously moving the sidewalk closer to the street in order to get more separation. Now that we've modified the site plan, we don't necessarily have to do that, so we can actually get an area of about five feet of landscaping in between the edge of the pavement and the sidewalk, and then, of course, we had some landscape plantings in there to make that a little bit more comfortable feeling, not a requirement by the code, but something that's more comfortable feeling. And then on the backside of that sidewalk, we would anticipate putting in a, a fairly large potocarpus hedge with lower greenery that would step down to the sidewalk, so it felt friendly when you came along there, and we would anticipate putting Japanese blueberries in this area that we've now modified, as shown on the plan. But the rest of our areas and buffers are very, very dense, and the landscaping is very well articulated, as you can see.
So what is the width between the edge of sidewalk inside to the edge of the parking lot pavement?
Seven feet.
So that's on your, you have seven feet on your property?
We have seven feet on our property, then the sidewalk, and then you'll have five feet from the sidewalk to the edge of the road, because the sidewalk-
Because it's, it is, the edge of sidewalk is your property line, in that area?
The edge of sidewalk is the edge of the right-of-way, yes, ma'am.
And in that seven feet is where the potocarpus hedge and the additional shrub material that you were just mentioning?
Yes, ma'am, so you can, you've got plenty of room to get nice ornamental trees, in ground covers-
Well, in seven feet, you can put a tree.
Yes, ma'am.
And you, that's where you're gonna have the additional trees as well.
Right, well, we have the banyan there, so we have to, we wanna do things that aren't gonna conflict with the banyan, but yes.
I mean, small tree, I'm talking large shrubs, small ornamental trees.
Ligustrums, Japanese blueberries, those types of things, can do a very nice job.
Okay, that was one of my concern areas. Now, as speaking on landscape terms, in the parking lot, it appeared, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that you are proposing all crepe myrtles in the parking lot? Or are you peppering other materials within those diamonds? And the reason I ask that is because, several reasons. One is, crepe myrtles are, you know, warm-season trees, so they lose their leaves three to four, maybe three months out of the year, depending on the species, of course, and that is our popular season in the winter, when they lose their leaves. Also, if you have some sort of a disease, aphids, for example, which crepe myrtles are prone to, and it can wipe out the entire parking lot worth of landscape, and that's concerning to me.
At the current time, the, what we had specified were crepe myrtles.
All of them?
All, all of them were. We would consider some alternatives, if that's what you want. The varieties that we specified, because we only use muskegee and naches and tuskegee, you might have heard me mention this before, they're immune to the Indian varieties, we don't use tuscarora, that's almost like a weed, so those three species perform well, and the ones at downtown at the gardens, as you know, have, have flourished, but, but if you'd like us to introduce some evergreens in there, we'd be glad to do that.
I'm, I'm happy with the plant palette, however, it would be nice if we just peppered some in there, just for that particular reason.
Reasonable comment.
And just for the record, the minor adjustments are accommodated from time to time through the install process, so our city forester, as noted on the plan, is able to work with the applicant, as the plan currently provides for.
Okay, and another, it's not an issue, it's a concern, that I know that you guys can take care of, and that is, within the terminal islands, it appears that there's a lot of landscape, which is great, a lot of shrub material, a lot of ground cover, however, I wanna make sure that we maintain, and this is obviously depending on, dependent upon the species that you put in there, not having been able to review each plant material due to the fact that it was, you know, I'm just seeing it now.
This is either one, looking at the old.
No, I'm not.
This is the old.
No, it's not. This is the first, that's the north side, this is the south side. Yeah, anyway, that's okay. My comment is, I wanna make sure that we maintain site visibility, sightlines, and keep the plant material as low as possible within the parking lot, because there are some developments within our city that we've had to-
Yeah, we've done almost exactly like we did over at Midtown, there's, the, the terminal islands consist of hope sound coca plum, potocarpus pringles, ficus green island, or isle shillings, all, and, and that's the way we maintain them, nice and low, and it has performed now for ten years, and it looks wonderful.
And all of those except for coca plum is where-
Hope sound, hope sound, the dwarf, hope sound dwarf.
Okay, which is dwarf, okay. Utilities in the buffer, sorry, a few more, utilities in the buffers, I wanna, it's getting hot in here, I wanna make sure that in our buffers, we do not have utilities that are going in conflict, because I've seen it on other cases, where we have this beautiful plant palette, this wonderful graphic that shows the landscape buffers that are supposed to be buffering our communities, buffering the neighbors, and all of a sudden, Seacoast and FPNL come around, and they say you can't plant in half of the buffer, so you come back and ask for some sort of a relief there.
I can assure you, we've already met with Seacoast at nauseam, and you're absolutely right, and your staff has, spends a lot of time these days helping us with Seacoast, because they've had to deal with this so often, and we're totally Seacoast compliant, we've designed all of the landscaping and the utilities so that they don't have, they don't have issues. Most of the utilities are in place today, the backbone is in place today, so we know exactly where it is, and it's in, and we've taken that into consideration. And, and they're not in the buffers, your code actually prohibits having those utilities in the buffers where they're planted.
Okay. And, okay, those are my questions.
Good.
For now.
I got a few. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Don, there was a comment made about children walking along the sidewalk to Hal Watkins. Could you walk me through how the, on this plan, how children will go around this and off to school at Hal Watkins, or will they be able to cut through the parking lot, as kids do, because they, they usually find the least, in-
Path of least-
Path of least resistance? How, how they could not cut through the parking lot, are there barriers to pedestrians getting in and out of the parking lot?
Well, there, if children were going to walk through the parking lots, they, they certainly would be able to do that. If we found that there was an issue, we'd put together a management plan and address it. Going, going to Hal Watkins, our observations have been that the majority of the students are walking on the sidewalk on the, on the east side of the road.
On the east side.
That's not where they're gonna always be, they're not always-
The students coming from the, from the west end, too, they're not gonna cross the street, they're gonna go up.
So, so they're, they're, they're over here, there is a sidewalk that's on-
Yes.
And, and we're going to improve that mobility, and I would tell you, if they, if somebody were to walk through the project, well, certainly safer than walking out on the, on the street, because we're gonna have pedestrian crosswalks, as you've seen on our plan, that are delineated with pavers, so that they find where somebody's gonna walk in, and granted, I mean, kids are gonna do what they're gonna do-
Yeah.
But we're gonna have that really, really with any use. Certainly, we were involved with the bank, the new community bank, I don't think that there's been any problems there. The restaurant, Quarter Deck, had been in place for many years, I never, Mr. Culliver, who's a good friend of mine, never expressed any issues with me with kids, so I, I think it can be appropriately addressed, and I think it's addressed in, in our other school districts that we have in the city as well.
And are you gonna share the, the blood bank's entranceway with, with the westbound entranceway to the-
It is totally, it, since it's a PUD, there's cross-access easements over the entirety of the site, and that is shared, yes, sir.
Okay, and the, the northbound on, on MacArthur Boulevard entrance, if you're going northbound, are you gonna take some of that median away in order to create a, I wish I had a cursor, I can't do it? You mentioned the, you need to, see that?
Well, in looking, looking-
Right up there, right there.
We're not taking any of the median away.
What are you doing?
What we committed to do with the staff was that we would, we would come out here and work with your forester and engineer to make sure and ensure that there's a safe sightline, similar to what Marcy just mentioned, so that there's good, clear visibility.
You're taking some of the vegetation away, is what you're saying?
Right, the one good thing about this particular roadway is that you've made it, you've traffic calmed the road.
Yeah.
It's, it's a slow road, people don't speed down that road, because it, because you can't, because it's not designed to go fast on.
Okay. All right, those, those are, those are some of the questions I had.
Okay, any other questions, petitioner? Staff, do you have any comments?
Just to add to the landscaping comment, I do wanna note that landscaping can be provided in that safe sight visibility triangle, but it would just be low-lying vegetation where you can have that safe view corridor. No additional comments from staff, you know, the, I think the presentation summarized that the proposed project is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, the cities, the proposed project is consistent with the city's LDRs. The applicant has adequately mitigated the waiver request by providing additional landscaping, additional pedestrian amenities, and additional traffic measures. The site meets all traffic performance standards, and again, I go, turn back to that condition number thirty, which allows the city to monitor any conditions onsite or offsite, and if we see anything, we do have the ability, the applicant is required to provide additional improvements, should we see anything. The applicant has fulfilled the major conditional use criteria as per code, we have suggested, and the applicant has agreed to the use restrictions to further mitigate, and of course, the landscaping, the landscaping has been enhanced in consideration of the residents. There was one comment on land, on lighting, I do wanna clarify that it will be a zero, zero-foot candle spillover at the north property line, so essentially, there's not gonna be spillover into the north, into the residential area, too, I did wanna mention that, and if there's any additional questions from staff regarding traffic, the city's traffic consultant is here and is able to answer questions, but staff, staff, staff's presentation was, was outlined well in the, in the PowerPoint, as presented by the project manager. by the project manager.
Any questions to staff?
One more question in regards to drainage. There was a comment about drainage, and I want to make sure and clarify that there's no, I mean, obviously, there's cross drainage, cross access between the actual commercial development, but there is no spill over, there's no drainage that is going to be going off-site, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the drainage has to be treated on-site as per South Florida requirements. There has to be additional exfiltration trenching, because that has to be accommodated for as part of the impervious, as part of the pervious being added to the site. So it's a combination, but there is a lot of exfiltration that is being provided. The site's drainage has been fully vetted and reviewed, and the city engineer has fully vetted and reviewed this and recommends approval as well. And of course, deployment will have to be modified for South Florida prior to construction from the applicant's end as well.
I know lighting design usually comes after the case, but has there been a conceptual lighting plan submitted at all?
We do have a conceptual lighting plan, yes.
Do you know where the closest light poles are to the north?
Well, they're not in, they're not in the buffer, so we know for sure that they're not, they're well beyond the 25 feet. The closest landscape would be, the closest pole possible would be in the landscape medians, and that's, it would be approximately 30, 30, 35 feet. But spill over and the direction of the light is the more important factor, and so nothing can be shining into the, onto the residential site. So what I mean spill over, just so everybody understands, is the actual lighting, the lighting itself spilling over potentially.
And when you say into the median, you're talking about the terminal islands? That's where the light?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, yeah, the terminal islands.
Okay.
Marcy actually brought up a follow-up question. Do we have any idea what the wet season water table is in the site?
I would have to defer to our city engineer for that question.
Well, the exploitation trenches have to have a certain amount of storage that, I mean, that will meet the storage requirements for an exploitation trench. I assume we're doing French drains on this?
There are French drains proposed in the landscape buffer on the, on the front.
Yeah, they added, actually, they had to add some to the, to the south end of the property as well to meet their storage and treatment requirements. You have to treat and store. The storage is actually more...
One inch for 24 hours, right?
Yes, and they meet all their requirements, and they discharge, I think it's like a 1.5 CFS is what their discharge point is.
And that would probably be through the North Lake conveyance system?
No, it actually shares the conveyance system with the banyan tree, and then comes up over into the Lake Catherine.
Could you talk a little bit about the garbage and the wastes, the management of the waste that comes out of this? Is there one dumpster, is that it? Right there?
Well, yeah, there's a, there's a large, basically, trash management area that's located right in this area. It's literally probably 200 feet away from the residential area, and we're managing, that's where we have our recycling, and we're managing that with a, with a trash compactor, and it's the best way to deal with it, because you have no smell.
Will all trash be compacted?
All the trash, probably have a cardboard, probably have cardboard recycling, which would probably be a dumpster for cardboard, and then you'll have a trash compactor and then the regular recycling bins. So all the garbage would be, go into...
All the garbage goes right interior.
Yeah.
And that is the only place on-site for garbage to...
It's the only, only place we, only place we wanted, you know, my, my personal experience is trash compacters are the way to go. I've noticed even now over at Midtown, they've kind of gotten away from the old dumpsters, and they're actually using trash compacters. That's what was used at downtown, and you walk by there and you don't, you don't smell. And this one, the, the enclosure's been designed where it can fully enclose and conceal the entire compactor unit.
And Walk, explain to me exactly where the loading will be for the southern buildings? Only on that one side?
Yeah, this is, this is, this is the loading right there, with small van trucks come in, and that's where they...
That's where a Cisco trailer would go?
That's where a Cisco trailer would go, yes, sir.
When you, you okay? I thought you were choking. When you were, well, actually, when I was listening to the P&amp;Z hearing, you had originally requested more sign waivers, or what I assume you originally had, by the time it got to us, you reduced the number of sign waivers, correct?
Substantially, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Before I close the public hearing, any other questions?
I think I'm okay.
Any other questions? Staff, any other comments? Okay, thank you. When I close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion. Who wants to start? David?
I have one big concern about this and the traffic, and that's the way the traffic studies are done, in that a drive-through restaurant, it doesn't matter how big the restaurant is, you generally have the same amount of traffic, but the standards, the amount of traffic generated by it is determined on the square footage. This is a very small drive-through, but may have a whole heck of a lot of cars. It may have as many cars, an 8,000-square-foot McDonald's can have the same. As a matter of fact, I think Starbucks actually has more cars, and they can be a lot smaller. I don't like the drive-through. I'll tell you that right now, I'm not very comfortable with the drive-through, I don't think it works here, and I can't support it because of the drive-through.
Good comments? Marcy?
Well, I think Don was leading towards a very good idea, which was a condition in regards to the hours of operation in the morning. We were talking about traffic and how he had mentioned that all of the restaurants were not going to be a morning restaurant, and he was alluding to a condition in regards to a third, or whatever the case may be, and I think that that's something to consider, because then that would help with the concerns about all the morning competing with the schools, and all of the, all of the traffic being there, competing with the AM restaurants that would occur. Although, I tend to agree, I don't think that all the restaurants will be morning, but they could be, and we have to consider that. I am very appreciative of the fact that it went from 50,000 square foot and a reduction of 20,000 square foot. I think that that's great. Office buildings, I manage an office building, and I can tell you that there is a big influx of cars coming in, so if you had it all at office, you would have an issue with traffic a lot more than you're having with, with these uses. I do want to reiterate, and I say this a lot, safety is, and I can speak on behalf of the entire council when I say this particular statement, safety is our number-one concern. I am a mom, I'm very concerned about people in general, but especially children, because you are right, they do cross, they don't use necessarily the crosswalk, but we have to, we have, we just heard a wonderful presentation from our police, our crime is down, we have a wonderful police department that makes sure and monitors, and I can tell you this, I see it at Palm Beach Gardens High School all the time, I'm there volunteering all the time, and when there are situations when kids are not, might not be abiding by the pedestrian rules, we have wonderful department and school officials that are very concerned as well, and they do help monitor that situation and make sure that they are safe, because sometimes they do maybe not make the best decisions. I'm also appreciative that it's, the number of stories have been reduced down from three to one. I think that that's a plus, because what could be approved is a building that could tower over the residential community. I think the original proposal has been modified a lot, and I do appreciate the applicant working with the residents in that respect, working with staff in regards to making it the best possible plan. I do also appreciate the buildings being put down more towards, or relocated down towards the North Lake area. I think it looks very nice. I was very concerned about it not having a meandering sidewalk, because that is kind of the Palm Beach Gardens kind of...
Standard.
Standard, thank you. And I, although it is somewhat of a formal landscape design, I think it will look very nice. And I think safety, it all boils down to traffic, and it, traffic in the traffic report is a little bit voodoo. I, I can say that, because I'm not a traffic engineer, but I can tell you reality, and reality is, offices more to me than retail. Retail splits out the traffic more, it bursts it out throughout the day versus the AM, PM, in my opinion. So this is tough, the drive-through is a little bit, 20 cars stacking, I'm trying, I work on Okeechobee Boulevard, and, well, Australian, but I'm trying to recall, I've never seen 20 cars in that Starbucks that's on there. I've racked my brain to try to figure out how many uses can fit in 1,000 square feet, and I came up with like two. But that doesn't mean that there's more, but, but I'm, right, and the, the, both uses are already along North Lake Boulevard, so maybe a bagel place, I guess. So the condition on the number of hours, and I think the drive-through, it is a little bit concerning, it kind of reminds me of the Chick-fil-A that's at the Kmart shopping center, and how they had to put those little bollards. I think with this design, it's going to be a lot better than that, than that commercial center, because it's being proactive versus reactive in this case, so I think I'm okay with it.
Okay. I think you've done a great job in a number of areas. Let me just, I want to go through the whole thing, although I am concerned about the drive-through, but I'll get through that in a little bit. I love the fact that you moved these buildings to the front. The problem with traffic, traffic studies and so forth, they never incorporate driving habits. And I don't believe in the morning that people are going to drive east on North Lake Boulevard and flip around to your Starbucks, your coffee shop, or whatever, when they've already passed the Starbucks and the Panera's and so forth. So I would have a concern if there, if I thought that there was going to be a lot of fliparounds there at that, at that particular point. I don't think you're going to have that, because they're not going to go there. You're going to have, your traffic's going to come from the east, heading west, and they're going to stop in there. And on that breakfast thing, I mean, how many breakfast places, everybody's not going to be open at 6 o'clock in the morning, I don't see that. But I love the fact you moved the trash compactor away from the residents, I think that was excellent. You're basically taking most of the, most of the, let's say, intensity away from the residents. I see those parking lot, the cars along the back there, that'll probably be the workers that are going to park along the back. I like almost, I mean, I think you did a great job with the design of it, I love the lower intensity, I love 90% of the people, 98% of the people, maybe even 100% of people at Catherine are going to see this, but their concern is that they're going to hear it. And that's where I come, and I just, I'm struggling, well, I'm not worried about the speaker, the speaker is so far away, it's not that loud, but the, but the pulling up and the, and the, the guy with that sports car, you know, with the shifter, and he's in that thing, and he's going to move, you hit the truck, Corvette or whatever, truck, that, that drive, that drive, well, I'm not going to go there, I promise I won't go. But, you know, that drive-through is something I'm having, struggling with in the middle of the parking lot. I just, I don't see it, and I don't know why you have to have it for 1,000 square foot you, I mean, I just don't see it. I just, I just, I think it just, it just changes the whole thing. I think some of the residents could get a little bit more comfortable if that drive-through wasn't there. And I don't see where it's that big of an impact, 1,000 square foot user with, with the drive-through. I really don't. I mean, I just, but that's mine, my opinion, so.
Thank you, Eric.
Joe, I'm kind of with you on the drive-through, that's my biggest concern. I mean, I've asked a lot of the questions that these, these very nice people have asked, and, and by the way, thank you for all of that. You did a very good job, I thought, and very good presentation. But I'm concerned about the drive-through, too, because what you're doing is you're bringing people in, and I can't point to the, with, with my pencil, I'm just tracing it myself. You're bringing people in on the northbound MacArthur Boulevard entrance and, and/or southbound, okay? And, and they're going all the way around the building to get to the drive-through. And then they're exiting, and the, I see a pinch point between people exiting and people going around the building. That's, that's, that's what I'm looking at, and that's what's bothering me the most about this. Because I'm worried about people who are pulling out of the drive-through and conflicting with the people who are going around the building. And that's, that's my, that's what I'm looking at, and that's what's concerning me the most. The rest of it, I appreciate the fact that you've cut the use, the, the square footage down. Marcy, I'm with you on office, I mean, if you were to load a 50,000-square-foot building in the morning and unload it at night, there would be a tremendous traffic jam on MacArthur Boulevard. There just would. This spreads the traffic out through the entire day, and that's, and that is, that's very helpful for the use of the traffic patterns on this, this PUD. So I, I, I'm supportive of it, I like the fact that you, you're taking the loading areas and the, the areas of the compactors away from the, the residents as well. My biggest problem is this driveway, drive-through. And it's a 1,000-square-foot drive-through, I just don't know how much traffic is going to come through there, and it's all an X-factor, you really don't know. I mean, you can't, you can't, there's no formula to tell you, because, you know, Marcy, you were right, traffic engineers, you know, they, they struggle with their figures, and they can't predict it, they just can't, there's no way. So, I mean...
Just one comment on the, on the drive-through. I think that Joe, Councilman Russo, had it, had it pretty much right, that most people, you're going to be coming in, you're going to take a right-hand turn, you're going to choose one of these aisles, you're going to go around, and you go through the drive-through, you're going to go back out and come back out to North Lake Boulevard. That is the common route, and there's very few conflicts there, I mean, with 1,000 square feet, it's a low generator. What it does for us, you say, well, why do you really need the drive-through? The drive-through will make a difference on our ability to get a tenant or not get a tenant. And if we could get a good tenant, well, then we can get another tenant next to him, and the synergies occurs. That's what it does. It lets us take basically, and Councilman Russo pointed it out right away, this is a, that's not a B location, that's a C minus location.
Right.
So the drive-through gives us that opportunity to get that tenant. And I think everyone said, all the other uses are on the corridor. This is not going, and there's a, it's, there's a real fear, I'm afraid of the, of the unknown, and I certainly appreciate it, but, but that's the common pattern. Is somebody going there, or maybe somebody is, is, let's just say, somebody dropped their child off at school, and they were leaving, they're going to go through here, they're going to, you know, come around, they're going, they're going to then go through the drive-through, go back out on North Lake and head west. You know, people typically don't go backwards to go forwards, that's common.
So what you're saying is that that, that drive-through is going to become an attractor to bring other people around there, so they'll know that there's a nightglass store there or cleaner.
It would be an attractant, it'll help us get a tenant in a C location, because we have a drive-through. That, that's it. Is that a, I mean, from a retailer perspective, that's what it does.
See, Don, I talked about Starbucks. I don't know what kind of drive-through you can get. You can get a drive-through that I don't even know about, that, that just changes the whole traffic situation. I said if somebody's going east, they're going to stop at the other Starbucks or Panera's. Okay, what, that's what I said. But there's a different kind of a drive-through that I can't even anticipate, because I don't even know, okay, where people are putting their apps in and making the order and then driving through, you know what I mean? We didn't even talk about what the apps do, and how quick do you order things, and people just drive in and drive out. And that's, that's part of the reason why I'm not comfortable, is because I can't understand what it is. It's not like you're presenting to me that cleaners, that people are going to really go with their, you know what I mean? It's something I don't know. And when I don't know, I get very much afraid that it might be something that may be very bad, and that's why I'm very much concerned. I didn't say I hated it.
Right.
I said I can't, just like David said, he can't support it at this point, because I don't know what it is, and that's the thing that concerns me. So I just don't want, you know, if you don't understand, sorry.
That's all right. To kind of put it all together, I guess, I like, I like the look of the property, I mean, the, the fear of unknown, obviously, to build on it, it's been vacant forever, so we're going to miss the Christmas tree guy there if this gets done, every year. And, and the, and the Blood Bank building is not overly intensive, so there's not a lot of issue and traffic and stuff there, but, you know, I basically like how you, how you designed it, how you offset, mitigate a lot of things, but I'm not going to support it simply because of the drive-through. I mean, that's my concern, and I agree with David 100%. I like the layout... I like the layout. I think you've got a lot of landscaping, a lot of buffering, a lot of good ideas, a lot of interior use. But I, you know, the, the drive-through to me just doesn't make any sense. And I, and I think that's a lot of the issues here is the unknown of what's going to be there. Can you have 30 cars at one time? Maybe. Then you get around to the front of the building with stacking and you have an issue. So I like everything that you've done. You've put a lot of work, staff has done a lot of work and process in it as well. Quiet, please. Quiet. Thank you. But I think the issue is going to be the drive-through here. If this is going to go forward, it's probably going to have to be without it.
I've discussed it briefly with my, with my client. And what we would suggest, maybe a slight different twist, is that we obtain approval for the drive-through, but we have to bring the tenant back for approval so that you can evaluate all the things that we're talking about with a site-specific traffic study relative to that tenant. Are you comfortable with the drive-through at all?
I, I can't get comfortable with the drive-through. I didn't say the rest, I do like the rest of the project. I do like the architecture. I do like the fact that you brought the buildings close. And I agree with my colleagues on that, but, you know, I just, I'm just not going to get comfortable with the drive-through.
I got a better suggestion. Take it the way it is and if you want to amend the PUD, come and see us then. Same thing. So the residents get to see what it is, we get to see what it is, and it's not that, I don't want them to go leave here tonight and not trust what we're doing. We both, we all just said we didn't like it, okay? I don't want to do it. If you want to do it later and you think you can present something that'll work, present it. You could amend the PUD later.
Explain what you mean by take it the way it is, as previously approved?
No, 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 right now. Take it without the drive-through. What he's saying, he says he wanted us to prove it with the drive-through and then let him come back and explain the way it is. I want the residents to trust us to say that we don't want the drive-through at this point. And if they want to come later to make the presentation for a drive-through, let them present it to the residents and present it to us and we'll make a decision.
Got it.
It's a better way to do it.
Yes, I agree.
Are you agreeable to that? Without a drive-through? Marcy? Agreeable without a drive-through?
Yes.
So that seems to be the consensus.
Good evening. May I address the podium? My name is Robert DeZella and I'm the applicant. And I have been sworn in.
Okay.
I stood up. The only comment I want to make about the drive-through, and first of all, before I start, I want to commend your staff. They've done an excellent job. We've worked on this for 20 months. And 20 months ago, when I came to Palm Beach Gardens and I saw the picture, I didn't even know it was going to be up there. I did the AT&amp;T building up the street that has the really nice landscaping. We started with a drive-through on Northlake Boulevard because that's where the national tenants want to be, you know? They want to be able to see their stores so that the, most drive-throughs are more of a convenience factor. And we were told that, well, what staff really wants is all the retail up front. And it doesn't really work to put a drive-through. Can you imagine, you've got drive-through lanes between those two buildings now, east and west? And it just doesn't work. In fact, we presented a plan like that. And I, my recollection is that staff's preference was not to have a drive-through up on Northlake Boulevard. So, and I saw earlier this evening that our, one of our original plans with two drive-throughs was shown on the screen. It's really important for us to have a drive-through because that's what's happening with retailing right now. And I don't mean to suggest that I'm more familiar with it than anybody else or a lot of people, but it is my business. And what's happening is, is these little centers now, at least the ones I do, are basically all national tenants. You know, you look up and down Northlake Boulevard and I would say 70% of the retail on Northlake Boulevard is functionally obsolete. There's a lot of for lease signs and it just doesn't work anymore. And what I'm trying to have there, and I'll give you an example. Now, I don't want to, just east of my, of this project, there's any, there's like that John Smeed or John Schmidt Subs. Does anyone know that? John Smith, right?
Yeah.
And that's a little retail shop, right? That sells those subs really small. So for someone to visualize, what would be a thousand square feet? And, you know, I drive by there all the time and it's not like there's lines and lines of cars going through there. And Mr. Herring, I believe, represented it 100% how I'm approaching this. And that is, if I can, you know, I'm not the kind of person that's going to go out and represent I've got a drive-through unless I have a drive-through. But I would be happy, and I really want my neighbors to know that, you know, I've been approaching this in a partnership format from the beginning. We approached them, we met with them, we took their feedback, we changed the plans. I mean, I mean it. We've been working on this for 20 months, a long, long time. And I'm not even, I don't mean to suggest we've worked on it any harder than you have because your staff has been with us toe-to-toe. But it would really mean a big difference in this project if I could get the approval. I, I think it's a half dozen one, six of the other. If we could get the approval with the drive-through and then the occupancy of the drive-through is subject to your approval. Because I really can't go out to national tenants and say, well, you know, I want to talk to you about, the way this works is you got to go through that whole, and I know some of you know, it's a long leasing process and I've got to be able to tell them I've got a drive-through and then I've got to be able to tell them it's subject to their specific approval by the city of Palm Beach Gardens. So, and, and that drive-through will help make that rear building work. And I want to mention something to the neighbors. And I mean this sort of like your neighborly partner. You really want this project to work. Because the worst thing that would happen for both of us is if I had an unsuccessful retail project here. Because you can see that up and down Northlake. They're ugly, they get old, they don't make money, the landlord doesn't invest in them and it just gets worse and worse. And you don't want to be around a project like that. I mean, I'm only saying that because it's my business and I do it in a lot of different places. It would be, and, and I feel comfortable asking you to go with me on this because I, again, I'm not saying I'm the only one. You've been there with me. We have worked so hard on this project. And our landscaping, I don't even know the numbers. The queuing is almost three times what code requires. Everything we've done here, we've gone not only overboard, but almost triple overboard. We, there are no shortcuts in this project. And I'm trying to complete it where it's almost all national tenants. Like pretend we have like 12 tenants here, I'm just making up that number, but it's pretty close. I'm hoping we have 10 to 11 national tenants. And to do that, I have a good feel for what the bells and whistles need to look like. And this drive-through, subject to your final approval, would mean a very big difference in the project. I don't believe that rear building will work without it. And therefore, I'm saying, please give me the opportunity to go out there and market it, knowing that I've got to come back to you to get final, specific approval for what the use is. And if I'm in your shoes, it, it's the same as what, and I'm respecting what you've asked me to go along with, but at the end of the day, we end up in the same spot. But it allows me to go out and market it, knowing it's approved, and come back to you for the specific approval. And I believe I've given you a very good example of what it could look like. The sub-shop down the street, Mr. Herring's already shared with you this idea of the Tide dry cleaners. I'm not representing that we're going to end up with either one of those two, but those are spot-on examples of what it could look like at the end of the day. So after 20 months of very hard work, I'm asking if you could please see yourselves going with our solution. Because I'm like asking you for the sleeves, you know, the sleeves off your vest. You don't need it any, you're going to get the final approval of what takes place in that Westerly end cap.
Thank you.
There was one other thing I wanted to address, and I think it was Mr. Russo that brought up before about the signage in the rear building. That monument sign at the southeast corner is dedicated to the tenant, tenants in the rear building. So the, you, you all have been, and staff's been very good about the signage, the wall signage will have for the east and the west buildings. They won't, you know, the plan is for them not to be on that monument sign. So the rear, we're doing, you can see the shape of the land. We've got that banyan tree to deal with, which we've respected. And unfortunately for retail, as all of you know, you want all your frontage on the major thoroughfare. If this property were tipped the other way, it'd be a lot easier to work with, but it isn't.
And that was the concern I have. I mean, I have very much a big concern for that big back building. I mean, I don't know how you're going to possibly put people in there. And I don't know that a drive-through, and I know, look, you know far more about this than I do. And I, and that's, but you also know, again, and we agree, that it is an issue. My problem is, is you talk about the Tide cleaners, okay? And that's, I don't even understand what that is, but that's, that's, I see Dunkin' Donuts over there at Military Trail, Northlake and Military Trail. I mean, the cars that stack in there, do you know, there's, they're way, well, you don't have that kind of room. If you ever put, if you're going to put somebody that's going to be very successful there, it's going to be an issue.
But you know that Dunk, you know the history of that Dunkin' Donuts that you mentioned?
It's been there forever.
They built the store without a drive-through and then they cut a hole in the wall and that became the drive-through, right? I mean, I'm talking about a queuing here.
Okay, let's, by the way, we don't have much time, so we got to get...
Thank you, Mr. DeZella. We're going to have more discussion.
Thank you very much.
What are the tenants that...
No, 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 no.
We don't have time. We got to get through this at this point. The decision we have to make is whether, is whether we're going to do this the way he's proposing it, which if we are, I think we need to have our attorney look at that and we need to bring it back because I'd be very much concerned about once we give it, what we can actually deny.
Yeah, that's, see, that's what I'm concerned about.
That's the concern I have. As opposed to not giving it, then he's got to present it to us.
He brings a tenant that we think is not going to work there.
So I...
Deny it, I mean, and we bring, we deny two or three of them in a row.
What I'm saying is that, is that...
We approve the leases. We're not a leasing agent.
What I'm saying is we either need to, yeah, we either need to, I think we have to table it because they're not going to be willing to accept what we want to do, okay? And if, and if we want to accept what they want to do, we really need to relook at it, our attorney look at it and so forth. So I don't think we can do it. What do you mean?
I don't think you can either.
Well, that's, see, that's the concern I have and that's why we can't do it tonight if that's the case.
I think it's either we do the drive-through or we don't. You know, I, I'm just not, I can't imagine them bringing a tenant that would be comfortable with on drive-through.
Well, I don't know that they're...
Either they're going to have too many or too little.
Okay, then fine. Then Don needs to come up and say whether he wants us to approve it without the drive-through. He knows that he can come back and amend it.
I agree.
And that's...
And redesign.
Right.
So I spoke this over with my client and I think we can go in the direction that the city would like, with the understanding that if we have a tenant, and it's a quality tenant, and we can bring it back with the traffic report, that, you know, it's not like it's a secret, you know, that we're coming back, we're disclosing it. Because I think it could work well. And I think when you saw whatever tenant it is that we have and we don't have a tenant now, that you'd be able to render a much more clear opinion on whether it worked or not.
Okay. Now, my other question then Natalie, is you need a different plan, don't you? Because obviously you can't have this approved plan.
It just would be green space until it became the drive-through.
I'm, I'm a little unclear of the proposal. Is the applicant dropping the drive-through?
Yes.
Completely? I just want to...
We're basically saying that we're dropping the drive-through with the understanding that if we find a tenant in the drive-through is appropriate...
And you come back through the process.
We'll bring that back through the process.
All right, now I understand.
And meanwhile, and we'll work with staff to create more green space and utilize that appropriately.
Okay, so in this case, my recommendation would be to not approve the modification to the list of permitted uses to add the major conditional use drive-through. And that nips it in the bud right there. Then the modifications dealing around the building are very minor in nature because you have, simply the drive-through goes away and the foundation landscaping is primarily added, which would likely qualify for an administrative amendment which can be reviewed by staff. So my recommendation is, if that is what the applicant's proposal is, and that is what the council would agree to, would be to eliminate the, the major conditional use from that, thereby eliminating the drive-through. And then all, any subsequent minor amendments that would occur as a result of that around building north would be reviewed under the city's Administrative Amendment Code.
Correct. That's fine.